Thursday, April 8th, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Obviously, we're doing this virtually. During presentations, we are going to mute and turn off the video of everyone except the applicant. We will open it up to public comment. If you are on video, you can press the raised hand function if you would like to make a comment. If you're on the phone, I'm not sure anyone is, but it's star nine to raise your hand and then star six to mute and unmute. And I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. So, Mr. Faya.
Yeah.
Mr. Kindermans.
As in?
Mr. Smith.
Mrs. Smith is muted.
Mr. Smith, could you unmute?
Yes, I'm here.
Fantastic. All right, we have a lot to get through, so let's get started. 7:00 PM, the Umbrella Arts Center is Jerry, are you here?
I am here, I just unmuted myself.
Oh, great. Jerry, if you want to go ahead and present, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for seeing us tonight. I am Jerry Wedge, I'm the executive director of the Umbrella Arts Center at 40 Stowe Street in Concord. We're here tonight requesting a special permit to install a temporary tent on our front lawn. As many of you know, the umbrella is a vibrant arts center for both the community and the region, with over 50 artists working in studio spaces and active arts and environment program getting kids outdoors. Many educational opportunities, including a chair of summer camp for kids and an award-winning theater company. In normal times, we would be in the midst of planning our Earth Day celebrations with a parade down Main Street and a festival on our front lawn. We would be planning to open our doors to the thousands of people who visit us during spring open studios. We would be offering in-person classes and workshops in all sorts of media, and we would be rehearsing and producing great theater. But of course, these are not normal times. We see signs of hope as more and more members of our community are vaccinated, and we see a real desire and a real need in the community to begin to reengage. Given that, we have decided to modify many of our offerings this year and present them safely outside on our front lawn. Some of these include holding an Earth Day celebration for families to create Earth floats to be launched at the Lowell Street landing. Family pods will be socially distanced in order for people to move safely around the site. We will hold our spring open studios outside on the front lawn with a reduced number of artists spread over two weekends instead of one. Again, they will be spaced out on the lawn in order to meet CDC guidelines. We will hold small performances throughout the spring and summer, and we will base the number of participants on whatever current recommendations are provided by the state. And we will allow up to 24 kids at a time on the front lawn during summer camp. There's, there's great energy and excitement from our constituents. However, planning activities outdoors is generally weather-dependent. We would like to offer greater reliability and a better public experience by providing the shelter of a tent. We feel the tent would be an asset to other community organizations as well, including the library and the visitor center. The specifics for the tent are outlined in our application. We are working with Peak Event Services to install a 30 by 80-foot frame tent. Hours of operation will be limited from 8:30 AM to 8:30 PM. And since we are limiting the size of any gatherings, parking requirements will be much less than our regular, normal programs. Before I finish, I'd like to touch on the letter that we all received from the neighbors yesterday. It's clear that we all have work to do as neighbors. I can tell you that our board is committed to reengage in the conversations we were having with our neighbors pre-COVID. And I can assure you that we will work to reestablish that by starting with a very small group very soon. Having said that, I'm not aware that we are out of compliance with anything related to our special permit from 2017 that would be relevant to this application. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Great, thank you. Yeah, let me start with that. Are there questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. It's a temporary tent, right? When do you think you are going to be taking it down?
Our present plans are to take it down at the end of the summer after our summer camp program. I think in the application, we asked for an additional two months in case it proves very successful and the pandemic is continuing to keep us out of the building.
Might be, you know, I, I think it might be a good thing if we, if we end date it with a date instead of sort of the end of the summer. I think, I don't know, but that might be something we want to think about. But I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thanks. I have a question. In terms of, you were talking about parking requirements. If you're having people outside, are you limiting the number of people inside at the same time? So if you're having an Earth Day celebration, you're not going to be having an event inside at the same time? Or are you going to be having an event inside at the same time?
Nothing of significance at this point. The major driver of our parking requirements is the theater, our 350-seat theater, and we are not opening that up.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, is there any intent to have amplified sound in the tents for any of the programming?
Yeah, some of the performances, and we don't plan on a lot of performances, but they would likely have a small amp.
Other questions?
And we've done that typically in the past as well. Any kind of festival we have, we have musicians and they, you know, they just have that small portable little amp that they bring with them.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, I mean, Jerry, you touched on the neighbor's letter, so I will open it up to public comment. I guess, let me ask the board, do you want to talk about that issue before I open it up? Or do you want to hear from the public first? Anyone?
Happy to hear from the public.
All right, let me go ahead and open it up. Knowing that we have received a whole bunch of letters, we have read them all. So if you could kind of not make your comments duplicative of each other, that would be great. And please give us your name and address before you speak. So who is first? William, William Lair, you see that?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm sending video, I don't know if you can see video.
We can see.
Right, so, um, there are, I think we had 28 people sign this letter, and obviously, there may be more people that support it. The issues that we laid out in the letter, we think are really clear. We think that hopefully we can get addressed. You know, I really appreciate Jerry acknowledging that this is something that's important, but the fact of the matter is that we had identified this as something that was really important even before the occupancy after the new renovation. And he said that he didn't think there was anything that they were out of compliance with respect to the original permit. But I think clearly, and a lot of other neighbors, I think, would agree with me. Not necessarily all of them completely, but that the applicant has designed the addition to fit with the character of the existing building, is proposing to shield in or screen the exterior mechanical equipment and other stuff. In other words, they're not going to cause significant adverse impact to the abutters. I think they have, and we raised this issue significantly in the past. And so in that sense, we think that that is a violation of the original permit. And, you know, the question about whether or not the sound, which is one of the biggest problems that we have, and that goes, continues, has continued all throughout COVID. We have additional emails, things like that, that could document. Those are all things that we feel like really should have been addressed with the community, and we'd be happy to work with, with the folks at Umbrella, try to come to a solution. But we're concerned, and this, you know, that unless there's some real teeth from the town, and the zoning board of appeals has opportunity now to make sure that those things are addressed, that additional problems may happen with the tent, which none of the signers of letter, and when we were putting this together, were, you know, coming out saying, we think the tent's a bad idea. We don't recognize the potential contribution going to make the community. The issue is, these other problems really need to get solved, and that we think that the granting of the special permit ought to be conditioned with the commitment to solve those expeditiously. It's been years now. We're not talking about a little bit of time, we're talking about years. And that's just completely unacceptable. I think there are probably a number of other folks that are cosigners on this letter, and, you know, the letter with all the attachments, and we have other stuff too that we can provide on this. All that stuff, all that stuff's available. But let me, let me stop there and see if anybody else.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Heather, I can't see every. Don?
Hi, I'm Don Cupka of 39 Devon Street, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Was a big supporters of the umbrella generally. I do think that there's a need for formalizing things here because we've gone down the path of trying to work things out. And like, you get a good example of that would be when there were roadies here breaking down after a concert, pre-COVID, obviously. And the noise, very loud noise, woke us up and continued well past midnight. And speaking to Jerry about it, the response was, well, there's no rule, as we can't. So I'd like there to be a rule, and I think this is a great opportunity for it, say that that's not appropriate in a residential neighborhood. And, and that's all. I mean, it, it is, would be, it would be helpful to the community, I think.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Diane Proctor?
Thank you very much. Diane and Alan Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. We speak for ourselves and our neighbors. And I, the, the noise factor is, is very important. If this starts at 8:30 in the morning, not everyone is up and about, you know, ready to be, to be greeted by whatever noise our engagement may happen at 8:30 in the morning, and then to go to 8:30 at night is again, you know, intrusive. I think if they said from 9:30 in the morning till 6:00 at night or something, that might be very different. We've been dealing with noise from the umbrella for a very long time, and, and this again suggests a kind of a noise intrusion. We don't know what the lighting is going to be like for this tent. Right now, the lighting in the back of the umbrella could light Fenway Park. I mean, it's, it's bold, it's bright. We can sit out in our side yard, and our neighbors here can sit in their backyard. They don't need any lights because the lights are so bold. Well, those lights don't need to be as bold for people to park safely and traverse that area. And on top of that, there was great promise that there would be shrubs and all sorts of things built to, to sequester the neighbors around, and that has not happened. In fact, if anything, trees have been removed. And so it's, it's balder rather than, than, than less transparent. We have been great supporters of Jerry and the umbrella for three years. And I think we're, we're both kind of discouraged, and we're, we're, we're looking for something, not just a kind of promise, but a covenant that we hope the select board, the ZBA will, will support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Heather, do you see anyone? I do not see anyone. Okay, Heather?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. All right, well, then I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. I think that we're dealing with a couple of different issues here. I understand the frustration coming from the neighbors. And I'm, have been thinking, as I'm sure everyone on the board has, about whether it is an appropriate mechanism to enforce or to revisit a previous special permit through the, either granting or denial of this special permit. I don't see this as the proper enforcement mechanism. It would be through the building department. And Ray confirmed that there are no outstanding violations. I understand that there's outstanding frustration, but there is no current outstanding violation. However, this doesn't mean that these, the neighbors' concerns shouldn't be thought about when we think about this new permit. So that is where I am. I mean, issues of sound, of, of light, we should consider how it will affect the neighbors, but I do not think that it is appropriate to enforce, you know, or change the, the previous special permit through this, through this permit. Thoughts from other board members?
I, I tend to agree with you, Elizabeth. I, I don't think we should mix the two, but that being said, we need to be very careful with issuing a new special permit. And I would like to investigate a way to at least, Cami, and you said there's no violations outstanding. But, you know, it's, I think the, the letter from the neighbors highlighted a few items that might be violations, and I don't know whether we can, you know, whether that can be looked at.
Not dismissing that, but I do not believe that through the zoning board, through a new application is the appropriate enforcement mechanism.
Correct, correct, correct.
Yeah, sorry. So I'm not dismissing those, those thoughts. And it sounds like the neighbors and Jerry are, understand that there's more conversations that need to, to go on here. But our way of addressing the neighbors' concerns, I think, is through the issuance of the new permit and what we do or don't do there. I don't want to touch the old permit.
No, no, but not tonight, definitely. And then just, and I don't know whether there's another way to, to address potential, but.
To address?
By, by, by no, by no means did I want to mix the two.
Okay. Understood. And Marsha, I don't know if you want to chime in on that either, enforcement?
I concur.
Robbie?
I was just, I guess that I hadn't really focused on it. But I'd like, I'd like to just spend a little bit of time focusing on the hours, the 8:30 to 8:30 situation. I think that one thing that we have done in, in granting special permits before for situations like this in other places in town is to consider, you know, factors and sort of behavioral factors and other sorts of things as we do this permit itself. And so what I do think we heard was some concern about 8:30 to 8:30. And I guess I'm trying to understand perhaps in the applicant, why, why those particular hours? Can you really deal?
Yeah, Jerry.
I'm happy to address that. Honestly, most of the public gatherings during the spring wouldn't start until 10:00. We put in 8:30 because our summer camp starts at 9:00, and families start dropping off likely around 8:30. So that's how the, that's how the mornings time was established. The evening time was, keep in mind the neighbors, that we didn't want to go late into the evening. We thought, we feel if we have evening performances, they'll likely be Friday night or Saturday night. And we decided that they should be, they should, they might likely start at 6:00 and then by 8:30. So we don't imagine at all that we will have programming every day from 8:30 to 8:30. We just were looking at the windows for possible events.
So, yeah, it answers the question. So what I'm, so I'm sort of wondering about what I'm hearing. And, and I, and I want to preface this by saying that I appreciate both the need that this not, that this permit application not necessarily address the old permit application. I appreciate Jerry's comments that he's willing to work with the neighbors, and I appreciate the neighbors' frustration. And I'm sort of wondering whether or not, rather than granting the use of the tent for the entire summer from 8:30 to 8:30, if we might want to consider granting the use of the tent for a shorter period of time with more restricted hours, maybe for the start, and more restricted hours maybe on week, you know, to 8:30 on week and sort of tight nights as opposed to weekday nights. And for a relatively short period of time with the notion that the applicant would certainly be able to come back and apply for an extension of that permit. And one of the factors that we could put into that was, how has it gone? Has it, you know, has the tent not been further disruptive? If I'll use those words, further disruptive to the neighborhood than, than other kinds of things? And, you know, quite frankly, have the neighbors and the umbrella been able to work together to work out, you know, more specific solutions rather than kind of the broad brush of it's 8:30 to 8:30 from now until the end of the summer? So that's what I'm trying to, I'm, I, I'm trying to think about, because I think that is within our power to, to limit the time here where we think there are concerns, at least about disruption to the neighborhood. And to try to, you know, take a baby step here, if you will, something that might work and would also give an opportunity for the neighbors and the umbrella to, to make, you know, to work out issues surrounding the tent as well as, you know, potentially other things they might want to talk about along the way.
Jerry, do you want to respond to that?
I, I think the predominant use of this tent for the umbrella is going to be for our summer camp program. And that we need to get our licensing in place rather early. The, the major events in the spring would be some occasional classes, and our open studio would greatly benefit from having a tent. So if you were to shorten it to say May-June, that doesn't help us in planning our summer camp program. If you limited it to just the summer, then we could take care of summer camp, and we would have to figure out something else for open studios. So I'm just not, there's not an easy directive that I can think of to, to think about what, what that best shortened window would be.
If you didn't have the tent, how would you handle summer camp? Would you just not be able to run it or?
Oh, no, we'll run it outside. We'll probably use, you know, we have the little 10 by 10 pop-up tents, and we'll use that for shade. And, you know, probably bring, bring kids inside more if it's a, if it's not good weather.
So this was something that I had asked Ray about because it seems to me that not all these activities actually require a special permit. I mean, if they're using, if they're having kids outside, what, what is a special permit? It's not a, you know, we're under 4.4.5, 5.4.5, fairs, bazaars, antique shows, suppers and dances. And Ray, I know that you and Marsha spoke about this, and that I agree, a special event like Earth Day is a, is a fair or, you know, under that section. But if they're having kids at summer camp, and they say, fine, you don't have a tent, we're still going to be outside, I'm not even sure that there's a special permit needed for things that are already in operation there. So studios or, Marsha, I don't know if you want to speak to that. Sorry, I, we.
There are still many people in the waiting room, so I keep having to let them in. And, no, I, I agree with the, the thoughts that you have expressed, Elizabeth, so I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay, so in which case, Jim, I'm just saying, I understand your approach. I just, it's not, all things are not equal, I guess. So if they're allowed to have kids at summer camp, and they're outside, and they're making noise at 8:30 AM, and there's no tent, you know, is, is that something that's, should be judged against the umbrella? Or should we talk about limiting special events under the tent?
Yeah, so what's, what does the summer camp run? Just, it's nine to what, and when does it run?
It's, it begins, it's a six-week program this year. It begins, I believe, on July 12th, and it runs from 9:00 o'clock in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. There's a morning program and an afternoon program. Typically, the morning program is more highly registered. And I could say I got numbers today. We have about 175 registrations to date for summer camp. That's spread over six weeks.
So philosophically, Jim, what are you going to say? They can't go, you know, go under the tent until 9:00 AM? It seems to me that the issue here is more with.
No, I think, I think what I can, I think what you could do is, look, I'm trying to find, I'm trying to, honestly, to be blunt, I'm trying to find an incentive for the folks to do what they say they want to do. And I'm trying to be thoughtful in terms of the neighborhood, and I'm also trying to be thoughtful in terms of the fact that, you know, in this pandemic, we want to have, we want to have people together to the extent that they can be together. And I think even in the people who have made comments, there is a, you know, real support for the umbrella. So, you know, I'm sort of thinking the following. We run a, we run a permit that says, you know, between now and the start of summer camp, you can run from 10:00 to 5:30 or something like that. And on the weekends, you can extend it, you know, Friday and Saturday nights, you can extend it to 8:30. Beginning, you know, at the time, in advance of the summer camp, we'll pull it back to 8:30 start, and again, weekends later. And we're open as a board to having folks come back in a couple of months and extend the times around that. So you can have the summer camp in place. You sort of limit the longer days to the weekends for now. You limit the earlier days to at least around, you know, on the outside of the summer camp, it doesn't start. And I think that everyone, you know, might well have some incentive to try to work and deal with noise and other issues that are coming from both these events and from, from the building. And so, because there's incentive to come back and say, yes, we worked out something, and we can now live with 8:30 to 8:30, you know, seven days a week. That's, I'm just, that's what I'm looking at.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense. I like that approach a lot. Theo, Robbie?
I can, I can go along with it.
I think that works, you know, it's tying the earlier time to the summer camp activities makes sense. The other layer we might want to add is some parameters around noise and lighting. You know, I, I don't know what those would be, but given that we have a sense of what the events and uses are going to be, just, just getting those specified in the permit so that neighbors know what to expect. And if something different happens, you know, there's a basis for, for restricting it, then I think that's helpful as well.
We're dealing with summer, so sun's not going to go down until later a lot of these times. So I don't know if there's just an after dark, you know.
Yeah, or for the Friday, Saturday, you know, evening performances, there may be, need to be lighting on whatever stage or, you know, is in the tent potentially. But, you know, that if we can kind of stick to, that's what the lighting's going to be for and what it's going to be. You know, that's what the amplification is going to be for, and that's what it's going to be. You know, we're not having loudspeakers blasting, you know, kiddie dance songs all day during summer camp. You know, just, just being a little more specific about those parameters.
So it sounds like we agree on approach. The question is how to get to the details. Jim, what you laid out in terms of hours? What I jotted down sounds good. Robbie, I like the idea of limiting light and sound somehow. So the question is, how do we write that? The hours are obviously more straightforward.
Marsha's smiling there.
Oh, Marsha! Aren't you glad you could fill in this meeting?
I mean, I mean, subject to somebody saying they don't like it, I would say hours is 10 to 5:30 on, until whatever. I, and Jerry, you're going to tell me when your summer camp starts. With the exception that on Fridays and Saturdays, you can go to 8:30 at night. Once the summer camp starts, we've got that, we'll back it up to 8:30 in the morning starts. And I assume that that can be Monday through Friday because your summer camp doesn't go on Saturday and Sunday. But I'll, I'll throw that out there. And still the 8:30, that there would be, I don't know what the right words are, but the amplification limited, I think, to, you know, the, the.
Within the tent somehow.
Yeah, how we do that and lighting sort of essentially within, you know, within the tent.
Not to spill out from the tent. Not to spill out from the tent. Is Ray or Marcia's are good technical term user.
No, but the amplification, not only a single small amplifier used inside the tent.
Jim, did you contemplate eight thirty to five thirty still the Friday through, Monday through Friday during camp and leaving it Friday and Saturday until eight thirty?
Yes. And, and I, I can, you know, and I would encourage us all that to the extent that the umbrella and the neighbors can come up with a program that people are happy with, I'm more than happy to have them come back and say that they're going to, you know, they're going to go to ten at some night. Are they going to, you know, in other words, I, I, I think we all want to be happy neighbors here. So I'm certainly not trying to say that this is what they're stuck with for the entire summer. But I think that's what they're stuck with until such time as they can come back and demonstrate that there's a better understanding within the neighborhood and the umbrella about what beyond this limit would be would be acceptable.
Jerry, yes?
I just had a question about the, if you put a limit on this, is that the limit of the public engagement part of the event or does that include setup as well? And I only raised that because some of the events we have starting at ten. So if it includes setup time, I wonder if we could make it nine thirty.
I'm happy with nine thirty anyway.
I am too.
I'll take that friendly amendment.
Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm happy with that. Good job, Jim. All right. Other comments or?
Yeah, Jerry.
Elizabeth, I can say that summer camp starts on July 12th and ends on August 20th.
July 12th, August 20th. Okay.
So I'd move that we grant the umbrella a special permit under section five point four point something two, three. Five point four point five and eleven point six. To set up a, a tent on their grounds at, on Stowe Street. For the purpose of holding various events, including summer camp and other special events. With the limitations that beginning now through July, excuse me, June 11th, June 11th, you said June 12th, didn't you, Jerry? July, July 12th, okay, through.
July 12th, yep.
Yeah, through, yeah, now through July 11th, that the hours of operation would be nine thirty to five thirty on the five days a week, Sunday through Thursday and nine thirty to eight thirty on Friday and Saturday, beginning on July 12th, that the hours would be would be moved back to eight thirty to five thirty. For the, the five thirty, for the five days a week and the eight thirty, eight thirty PM on Friday night and Saturday night. That lighting, any lighting that would be kept within the confines of the tent and that amplification be something akin to what Theo said about a single amplifier, you know, designed to, you know, to hold most of the amplification within the tent itself. And that this would extend through six weeks, July, August, extend through, would Labor Day get you there? September 7th.
I'm sorry, you said that would go through September 7th?
I think said Labor Day, September 7th, but I could be wrong. September 6th, September 7th, something like that. And that, you know, we would certainly you know, we'll, we'll ask the building inspector to, you know, to be mindful of, you know, report back to the board, any, you know, quickly as possible, any comments and concerns and that we would be very open to extend the hours at a further meeting if the applicant in the community can come to a, you know, better understanding of how that would work.
Also, this is still subject to a tent permit, right? Okay, so the tent permit needs to be pulled, Jerry.
And, and then, and, and then also you, Jimmy, you said that he can come back or that the applicant can come back for an extension of the hours. But I think also early on, the applicant said he might want to run later into into the fall. So I think, you know, we could, you know, upon
Sure.
A complaint-free season, you know, I think we can, we could potentially extend it for the applicants.
So that's my motion and with those additions in my, and not in the motion is my fervent hope that this spurs people who clearly would love to work together, to be able to work together, to come up with something that would be, you know, really helpful in that environment. So I would, I really hope that this is a, really a win-win for the community because obviously it's important. It's an important institution in the community and it's also you know, it's also a community there and people living close together and and, you know, you want to, to make sure you're mindful of your neighbors. That's not part of the motion.
Very, very well said, Jim, and I will second that motion.
That's great. Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Kinnamans?
Hi.
There's more. I thank you all very much. And you all again.
Hopefully soon.
Hopefully with smiles on everyone's faces. All right, moving on, seven oh five, Robert Gray and Martha Collins Gray.
Yes, I'm here. This is Martha Collins Gray. Hi, hi.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead, that'd be great.
Okay, great. Thank you all for listening to our request. We live at one five five Monument Street and we are reapplying for a previously approved request for seven point one point three for an exterior wall extension along the same non-conforming distance within a required yard setback. Requires special permit eleven point five, eleven point six. It's on the south side of our house. We were previously approved for a hundred and twenty-two square feet, but have changed a few things on our renovation and it has been scaled back to eighty square feet. So it's squaring off our kitchen for our new kitchen. The FAR is currently thirty-four oh two on our property and we're allowed fifty-one oh three. But are only using eighty square feet of that. And we're in, we sit in the middle of two other non-conforming lots. And half of our neighborhood is resident C and we are resident B.
Okay, I was trying to figure out what you cut down and I couldn't completely do it here. So you went from
Yes.
Okay, so.
So the extension came around to the, to the west and we've eliminated that. So we, it wasn't just on the southern side, it came, we were actually going to extend it on the back, which was the hundred and twenty-two square feet.
Okay. And I have heard from staff that the HGC is coming to do a site visit.
On the fifty.
I would suggest that we can condition our approval if we so decide to approve on the HGC certificate of appropriateness being granted.
Yes.
Okay, so any comments from the board?
So this is a small, I mean, at the end of the day, this is a, makes it less non-conforming than the original permit. Is that, is that a fair statement, Ray?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, I, I ask if it makes it, if this, I think I'm understanding that, that this proposal is less non-conforming than the proposal that we originally approved.
Correct, Jim.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments? All right, let me open it up to public comment. Heather? All right, I will close public comment. I think it would be hard for us not to approve this, seeing as we approve something that increased the non-conformity more. Right here, a motion if anyone would like to give one, just conditioned on that historic.
Just, I just have a quick question. So we're amending the original site plan? Is that the form this is in or we're granting a new site plan? I mean, a new, a, a new, new thing, okay.
So I make a motion to issue a special permit for Robert Gray and Martha Collins Gray on the section seven one three and eleven point six of the zoning bylaw. A special permit to construct an eighty-square-foot addition on a three thousand four hundred and two square foot non-conforming structure at one fifty-five Monument Street with the condition that the historic commission will issue a certificate of appropriance.
Great. Mr. Kinnamans?
Hi.
Smith? There's more. I thank you very much.
Okay, and thank you to Ray, Maddie and Heather Carey for all the help.
Thanks, have a good night.
Okay, you too. Thank you.
Okay, on to our seventh one, environmental pools. Who is here from environmental pools?
Hi, good evening. My name is Molly Upendorf. I work with Stamsky McNary. I'm representing environmental pools, who is the applicant. Corey Everly is here as a representative from environmental pools as well. The property is located at seventy-seven Revolutionary Road. And an application for a variance was submitted in order to construct a pool, a modestly sized pool within the rear yard setback. The request is for eighteen and a half feet to the rear property line where thirty is required. The location chosen for the pool is the best suitable location for the property in terms of existing entities on site as well as public good and in turn of public good. The neighbor south of the property at eighty-five Revolutionary Road, their dwelling is, I think about a little less than ten feet from the property line. Pool is further away at that. I can share my screen. I have a plan I can pull up. Or Heather, I don't know if you want to do that or I'd be happy to.
You can share if you'd like.
Okay, great. That'll be easier to explain here. Can everyone see that? Okay. Okay, so this is the proposed pool in this location and this was the property I was just talking about. So the dwelling is pretty close to the existing property line. Having a pool in this location puts it further from this abutter. And this abutter's dwelling is over a hundred and fifty feet away from the rear property line. Putting it at a good distance from, you know, all of the abutters. And having the pool in this location minimizes tree removal. No trees are required to be removed with the pool in this location. It's less intrusive on the site. And like I said, you know, it's, it's a modestly sized pool, fifteen by thirty feet. And, you know, I think this location is the best suitable for the property. Myself and Corey are happy to answer any questions if the board has any at this time.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's just start with a variance. So this is a variance. This is not a special permit. The criteria for a variance, and I believe that you already spoke with Ray about this. Ray, you explained the variance situation to the applicants.
Yes, I did. We talked about it.
Extremely difficult to get a variance. There, the criteria is that it, there's something specific to this lot that is not specific to other lots in the same area, in the same zoning district that make this a particular case where it would be a substantial hardship to accomplish what you, to, to to not be able to do what you're, you want to do on the land. So in the past, we've granted them where there's a huge drop-off in the back. It's the only house lot in that area that has a drop-off like that. You wouldn't be able to build on it unless we granted a variance to build on that. This substantial hardship, a pool is never going to get you there. Just because you want a pool and you can't build it there, it will not be granted as a, as a substantial hardship. Specifically affecting the lot, the setbacks do not specifically affect this lot. And the third thing is whether or not granting the variance would derogate from the, from the from the antenna purpose of the zoning bylaw. And in this case, the purpose is to have setbacks between the lots. So I, I believe that this fails on all three of those and I think it's a non-starter. Happy to listen to what other board members have to say.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm not going to disagree, but can I ask, just ask a clarifying question? So is, I, you mentioned, the applicant mentioned the distance to this other neighbor. Is it, is there a location on this lot where you could put a pool and it would not violate the setback?
So this location here was looked at and the grades do drop off a little bit in this area. Putting the pool in this area would require some tree removal, which wasn't preferred. And it would also, you know, put it closer to this neighbor and you know, I, I believe this neighbor also had concerns about some existing noises on the property just from air conditioner condensers, you know, and, and just mechanical equipment outside. So I think putting it in this location keeps it at a good distance from this neighbor. And you know, this abutter over here is over a hundred and fifty feet. So there's, you know, significant buffer between this neighbor and the pool in that area. You know, as far as substantial hardship, the, you know, the, the size of the lot as well as the shape of the lot, location of the dwelling in comparison to the septic, the driveway. You know, this, this was the preferred location for the pool. And I, I think that, you know, it's also a better alternative for the neighbors as well. Which is why this was the preferred location for the pool.
And I'm sorry, I should have said I'm not necessarily disagreeing that it isn't a, a better location for the pool, but I don't think we have the legal ability to grant you a variant.
So, yeah, so let me just ask one, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, just, I don't want
Go ahead.
Along this too long, but I just want to, I just want to ask one more question. So either Marcia or Ray, could you just remind me why in this particular case, it's a variance as opposed to a special permit? If they were building out the, if they were building out the house, I
Right now, everything meets the zoning setbacks on the property.
I see. What you're saying.
Being existing non-conformity, right?
Yeah, the, it's a fully.
Oh, so since it's a fully conforming lot, like, like a lot of things in life, having found that rare beast of a, of a fully conforming lot and conquered, you actually want to keep it that way. Which is why the variance is opposed to the special permit. Right? Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I support, I obviously support what Elizabeth is saying. I mean, and we've almost proved it here, right? I mean, what we've essentially said is that the, the zoning bylaw says that if, that you're supposed to build it within the setbacks. And in fact, there is a place you can build it within the setbacks. It is not an ideal place perhaps, but it is a place within the setbacks. That makes it even harder to push against the variance. I think, you know, I agree that if this were special permit, I think this would be a very quick decision, but unfortunately for you guys, I think it's a variance which makes it even a, it just as quick a decision on the other direction. Because I just don't know how we do it, I, I, you know, because, because what would happen, just so the applicant understands and the homeowner understands, what would happen in this situation is, is that that would open up a flood of uh, changes which, you know, clearly the zoning bylaw and town meeting that passed it and all that, you know, do not intend to be the case. So I think that we could probably be um, you know, really be said that we just didn't do our duty here with respect to what the law is, so. I don't see it.
Um, all that being said, let me open it for public comment, just in case anyone has public comment. Yes, Robert Easton.
Hi, Robert Easton, eighty-five Revolutionary Road. Let's see, um, I appreciate the applicant's um, notion to try and push the pool away from our house to the impact and stuff, um, which I, uh, which is terrific, but I actually wanted to, um, what got my attention, the application and what Molly had said earlier, was that there, there's no tree removal required. And I was curious about all the trees they had removed up to this point. And the reason I asked that in the application, I didn't see any uh, information with respect to the tree preservation bylaw. And while the bylaw doesn't specifically call out pools, I don't think, um, I would think any structure requiring a permit or, or a variance would be considered, um, you know, under that bylaw. So I, that's, I had that question, and I, two other things, that there was no um, fence laid out. But again, that, um, I don't see the board going forward, but I was wondering about the tree preservation bylaw issue.
Ray or Marcia, can you speak to that in terms of a pool?
Yeah, so the pool wouldn't trigger that bylaw, I'm just trying to pull up the tree bylaws, right? It's um, construction over fifty percent of the existing structure. Uh, new hu, a new house or the demolition of a structure to a fifty square feet or greater is what the, triggers the bylaw.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
No, if, if the board did decide to grant and go forward, I would have liked to, as near, um, every pool requires a fence, I don't see a fence. Uh, and Molly did mention the, the idea of the, uh, the, the noise from equipment, since they did install it, I'd like some idea of attenuation, but I guess it's beyond that, so I'll, we'll take up any of your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, Heather, see anyone else out there? No. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. All right, oh, yeah, Jim?
Yeah, can I just ask one other, I just want to ask one other question. Is this a situation where uh, we should at least, I, I defer to Ray and Marcia, we should be offering to the applicant the opportunity to withdraw, or does it not matter? As opposed to denying, that's all I'm saying.
Honestly, Jim, I don't know into that question. I mean, if they were through their application, they wouldn't be coming back for another variance, I don't think.
Right.
So there's nothing they're going to apply to with respect to this pool that it's going to be a kind of mess them up if we have a denial there for the variance?
I mean, I suppose if the applicant chooses to withdraw again before you vote.
Would the applicant like to withdraw before we vote?
I mean, there's really no other spot on the property other than this one spot that would be within the setbacks. And you know, as, as Ray was saying, if, if we drew, we know what it's like to come back with a variance, so that, that's probably not going to be the situation moving forward. You know, I think to withdraw without prejudice would be, you know, maybe, maybe a safe move. Instead of getting issued a, a denial, give us a chance to, you know, go back to the drawing board, see if there's another option. And you know, if we need to go before the board again for, you know, another, another permit or whatever needs to be done, then um, we would still have that option moving forward, so.
Sounds like a good plan. So you'd like to withdraw without prejudice?
Yeah, I mean, it's looking like a denial, so I think, I think withdrawing without prejudice would, would be, would be our move forward, so.
Um, do we have to vote to accept that?
I'm sure we do.
Yes, yes, you do.
Let me uh, find your motion.
I, I move that we uh, accept the the withdrawal without prejudice for uh, the variance for environmental pools at seventy-seven Rev- Revolutionary Road.
The second?
Second.
Mr. Kinnerman's.
Hi.
Smith.
Hi.
Chris Moore, hi. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, good luck.
Okay, moving on, seven fifteen, Simes Development and Permitting, who is here from Simes?
Good evening, I'm attorney Josh Latham on behalf of Simes, and with me is Rich Harrington, the engineer who we're presenting tonight.
Great. Um, so this is our, our introduction to this particular subdivision, so I would say tonight kind of an overview would be very helpful for, for us.
Certainly, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah.
Great, um, hello, can you share my screen, please?
I can allow you to share.
You're gonna, you're gonna do the screen share?
Sure, if that works.
Sure, I don't think you, I think you should be able to just do it.
Okay. If you can. Haven't, okay, share the screen?
That should alert, right, Heather?
Wait, am I, I'm sorry, I didn't, am I sharing the screen?
No, he's got it. Good.
Trying to work out what's happening, sorry about that. Uh, good evening, Richard Harrington, engineer from Williams Rogers, Jeff Rutter is also here, and AJ Piterino from Patriot Excavating. What you see in front of you is the approved definitive subdivision, and it's a proposed road A and B cul-de-sac. And then along with Main Street on the bottom and Highland Street on the right, we have in clockwise order lot number one, two, three, four, and five along Center Village to the left. And then six, seven, eight, nine, and ten at the back with the railroad, railroad station and eleven and twelve about Junction Square. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen are interior where the existing homes are. And then we have Lot A on Highland and Lot D on Main Street. The plan itself is broken into
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir, just, just, I, because I missed a word and I, I, you said this is a, this is an approved subdivision?
Uh, yes.
By the planning board has approved the subdivision?
Uh, yes, we've received a decision with conditions. And those conditions have parameters within them to protect the neighbors, the abutters, and some other typical standards that have been reviewed by all your staff. During that process.
Thank you, I just want to make sure I heard your word right.
Oh, sure. Sheet number five shows the street topography plan is required to construct the subdivision per the subdivision regulations. So at the beginning of the road, we're flat in elevation, and then we would go down to the bottom to the cul-de-sac of Road A. We match existing grades within the cul-de-sac turnaround. And then the left-hand side is the cut rating of the earth removal to construct the road. And as you can see, we're a distance away from the abutting Center Village and also the abutter, Mr. Marquis at the front along Main Street along this West Philly side. Along the back is still area for drainage, and then Road B goes off to the northeast towards Junction Square. And that's in fill area also, and we match the distant contours within the cul-de-sac turnaround. From point A, which is the road gutter on Main Street to point B, which is at grade within the turnaround areas of both roads, we're required to cut out the middle to comply with all your suitable grades, safety, traffic, et cetera, in drainage. That results in a cut on lots one, two, three, and four, cuts on lots twelve through sixteen on the interior where the existing homes are, and then the back is all fill material. This, this is what's required for that, and then what we also have is the site topography, which shows all the grading required, which is what this permit is seeking approval for. This shows the entire buildup of the property, which is a requirement to show, and what it has is proposed house boxes and proposed driveways off of the street. Septic systems, but either behind in the red lots or in the side yards. Along lots two, three, and four, you start to see a little more grading in retaining walls, which is not associated at all with the subdivision road. And then we have some additional retaining walls in the front of lot four and five, where we made some changes to improve, to minimize fill per comments of the planning board. Again, everything six, seven, eight, nine, ten, or eleven, and twelve are all in fill. So as far as earth removal, those lots are not going to have any earth removed. They're going to receive some earth from the middle central site as you try to keep as much material on the property. And then again, we have a cut area with thirteen through sixteen, and that's where the existing home sites are, where it's higher in elevation, and we just need to, to match grades to come in with garage unders and to have septic systems on those lots also. We have received the the proposal from Freeman Peterson, and in their proposal, it highlights the three criteria findings that the board must make in order to issue this earth removal. We have a proposal for removal of topsoil over twelve thousand cubic yards and the remainder of over forty thousand of fine standing gravel. When you look at the criteria that the board has to find is seven point five point three point one, the volume proposed for removal does not exceed the minimum practical removal required to accomplish the construction, development, or improvement in accordance with the plans therefore. The plan is therefore is a definitive subdivision, which has received approval. And it has been designed also in recognizing the Title V regulations, your stormwater management bylaw, the zoning bylaw, and the subdivision rules and regulations. So within our narrative, we, which is right after the application that we submitted, we have provided our breakdown of how we believe we provide the minimum removal possible based upon the same deal, you know, highlighting yellow, the same thing. Construction of ways, the street to talk, topographic plan, and then we have four bullets which explain that in detail of how we're complying with that part for the road. And then we go into the construction of the dwellings, which is the site topography plan. It talks about six additional bullets where we're keeping the dwelling close to the street. We're minimizing the setbacks for the tanks, for septic, all the finished grading is going to be the minimum and maximum required per, per the regulations. As we go back to the second criteria, seven point five point three point two, the plan submitted in connection with a removal is designed to minimize changes in existing contours to enhance attractive land utilization, effective drainage, suitable road gradients, access, or other design considerations. When you go back to the next page on ours, you'll see that we're provided information regarding that again, and we broke it up to talk about the street and then to talk about the dwellings. And as you will find that we have designed many subdivisions in town. We've worked with staff when we can to make things the best way possible. And the result here is a plan in front of you that, based upon minor adjustments per the conditions of the, of the planning board decision, results in the minimal amount of changes to existing topography. The minimum changes are based upon the dots on the street topographic plan on sheet five, where we match grades within the cul-de-sac of Road A. Which is in here, and here, and then we also match it here and here for Road B. And then we're at existing grade at this point, so from point A to, to the cul-de-sac areas, we are doing our job to minimize grading by matching grading where we can with existing contours. And then we're filling in the areas at the bottom based upon the observed test pits from the town engineer, and your stormwater bylaw for those two areas. When you look at this plan, you'll notice that the earth removal isn't across the entire property. And we do not have a butters around the entire perimeter. So the question is, to what extent is earth removal criteria applicable to, to lots? And to what extent would any geotechnical review or any other criteria that the board may require or ask for? And the one that is been identified by your town engineer is that the geotechnical have a review along the back property of lots three and four near Center Village. Seven point five point three point three, affecting the removal will not be detrimental or injurious to abutters or the neighborhood. Either by the alteration of existing topography or by substantial change in the use of the streets of the neighborhood. Once again, the next page in our narrative has a breakdown of the construction of the ways and the alteration of existing topography. The street grading, which I showed on the site topography, will not impact the neighborhood, it's away from the abutting property lines. And then we broke it down to talk about set the seventeen, fourteen seventy-two Main Street, Lot E is between the road and that dwelling to the west. We have a triplex for Center Village Drive sixteen, twenty, and twenty-two, which is about thirty feet off the property on the opposite side of a six-foot-high chain link fence. And then the other Center Village triplex at twenty-eight, thirty, and thirty-two. We've walked that perimeter, we've provided site photos of those two areas affecting Center Village. And then the public way itself, lots E and F in the other houses on the construction are basically a curtain or the grading's not going to change that area, so it will not be detrimental to the abutters or the neighborhood along Main Street. Construction of the ways and, and substantial change in the use of streets. It's a residential use today, it'll be a residential use tomorrow. We provide multiple testimony of, from peer reviews also for traffic, site distances, et cetera. When you look at the construction of the dwellings, the alteration of existing topography. We looked at the, when you look at the frontage along the road itself, you take a look at where the high points are along the lots to begin your driveways. Which is here, for this one, it's a garage under, it's a garage under, garage under, garage under, which allows the backyard areas to be higher in elevation. Once we do that, Title V has septic areas that are tight and at minimum setbacks to the houses themselves, so septic tanks, et cetera. So our work area is pushed as close to the frontage as possible with the front yard setbacks for each house. So as you look at the setbacks to the front yard, we're at the minimum setbacks of twenty feet in all locations as we try to minimize the removal of earth, and that's the same thing across the site. Once we did that, then we looked at the slope back here and we incorporated some retaining walls and some cut slopes. And then we also incorporated a landscape plan which is for lots two, three, and four, and five, so that what you will have is a heavy area of landscaping that's going to also protect the slope. That's, that's in this whole area here once it's constructed. The geotechnical part of it, of the concern is, we believe, is that this pinch point here, and at the point where this duplex is near the slope. You will notice when you walk the site that there's a retaining wall on the back here, so this triplex is already protected by itself from its own slope by retaining along, around the back of the property. And we're not impacting anything real in close proximity to that fence line to endanger that slope. But we're willing to have the geo, uh, uh, geotechnical engineer produce some paperwork focused on lots three and four as, which is contained in, um, condition number twenty of the planning board decision, where the assistant town engineer reviewed the entire property, didn't have any issues or mention of any geotechnical within the entire property except for this area. With the review that would, once, we would have, if the board choose to move forward with, with GPI as a review consultant, uh, the board will recall that when this was a cluster, GPI was a third party. the board will recall that when this was a cluster, GPI was a third party review consultant before Justin and Steve were hired at the Town Engineering Public Works Building. They decided to not hire GPI and do the review internally and keep it in-house. Which is fine. So they already did the legwork similar to GPI. So this Wilmington office of GPI has already done work on the existing conditions. The existing stormwater, the groundwater depths, the same type of recharge. So this office is already familiar with a bunch of the criteria that, to begin with. When you get into the peer review on, on the second page in their task, again, the first three bullets of what we already talked about, but then it goes on to talk about a couple additional bullets, which just want to make sure the board is comfortable or board is asking for the things that they, they require or need that hasn't been provided already by earlier reviews from GPI and also by your town, your town staff. Of the geotechnical and hydro, hydro geological considerations for bullet four seems to talk about the entire area, but your town engineer just talked about the back of lots three and four. And then bullet number five talks about construction sequencing, operations, dust, stormwater, erosion, trucking routes, et cetera. Where that was completely vetted by the planning board with additional care review consultants for traffic hired by the applicant or paid for by the applicant as well. So we reviewed the, this aspect of it, and then we would work with them like we did before, where we would respond back to any comments they have should, you know, this proceeds in, in that manner. So that's the overview of, of the project itself. And what I, what I can say is that when you look at the utility plan, you'll notice that there's building envelopes on each house lot, and you'll see that the house box is provided. A slightly larger, the lots are larger. But it's one through four are oversized and, and have greater depth to accommodate the, the grading alongside our village. You'll see that we have subsurface drainage and we would have the minimum grading allowed to over those drainage areas. And again, all the septic areas in Title V will be met to comply with your local regulations. In addition, we also have the letter from Simes where they submitted their, their written testimony, and they've included exhibits which were already presented to the planning board in regards to their decisions. It talks about the trucking, the police details, et cetera. And it also references the deliveries, the exhibits for all the Patriot excavating. And AJ is here to talk about, available about Patriot excavating. Did a takeoff analysis and they, the highlighted yellow talks about the cubic yards in the trailers. And so as we proceed with that, I'll, I'll pause and basically say that we are seeking approval. And, and we can talk in greater detail about things for the subdivision in providing the minimum removal possible. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Let me open up to the board. Questions, comments?
I actually have a sort of tangential question, which is, you know, when the purity was before us, we had the earth removal piece, but we also had a height variance piece. I'm just wondering if the way this is graded now, if any of those backlogs are still going to need a height variance at some point down the line. Just for the background.
It's, it's a waiverless plan and they'll fully comply with all aspects of the zoning by law.
Okay. Thanks. That's helpful.
I'm sorry. Can I just make sure that I understand the posture this? The, the planning board approved a site plan with, I mean, the, yes. Approved the subdivision with a bunch of conditions. The applicant has appealed, as I understand it, has appealed those decisions on the, on the theory that they don't agree with certain of the, that certain of the conditions are appropriate. Right? And so that, that is, that case is still pending in the land court. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and this, but this grading, et cetera, et cetera, that you're proposing to do here, you believe is nevertheless consistent with the planning board decision as it was rendered? Or I, I'm just trying to understand.
This, this is the plan set that the plan of board decision was based upon.
Right. So that if your contention here, and I'm not trying to put, I'm, I'm really just trying to get the posture of the case. So I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to suggest anything other than that. So what, what you're saying is, is that if you did this excavation as it sort of said here, you would have a subdivision that would, in your judgment, comply by with the planning board decision, even if your appeal, even if the appeal was, was lost or whatever. Is that, is that a fair statement? Maybe I'm putting too many words.
You're a little choppy, so I apologize. Um, so the plan of board decision has conditions. So we would complete, you know, update the plan per those conditions. And then, then it would meet the decision.
Okay.
So to say it another way, what you're presenting is assuming that you win the appeal and that those conditions are not in place.
We would build this, yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm choppy and I may be losing the internet. So let me just ask Elizabeth. So this, this comports with what they would do if they won the appeal? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I just said. And that's rich. That's what I think you just agreed with, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But this is not the plan that was approved by the planning board because those conditions about preserving those lots are not done here.
Got it.
On the screen.
Sure.
So.
So but, and, and sorry, I, so that I, I understand is the you, you mentioned the preserving of the lots. Wouldn't that those be the same lots as being subdivided now as well? It just say go to the planning board or to the town wherever. And, and just not want to be built on? Or are they, are those lots then configured differently?
Great question, Rich.
So it's a lot, we're, we're talking about just the two lots designated as park area?
Yeah, I, I, sorry, I did not read the appeal or, or the lawsuit. So.
It's a good point because the appeal, which I haven't read all of it, but the, the pertinent points here seem to be that the applicant is arguing that due to the conditions that those five, it's five lots, Rich, right? Two that are put aside in part for a potential park and three that are put aside for potential purchase by the town for affordable housing?
Yes.
Correct? That the applicant in their complaint has argued that because of those conditions, they can't do any work. Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, that because many borders basically said you can't touch any of that lot for the next three years. So the question is, is how do we approve this? It's complicated. If we're approving this and you guys are going to do this, then it's in violation of one of the conditions, right? I mean.
Well, one of the other conditions says that we have to obtain approval from you before they'll endorse the plans. So they've, which typically doesn't occur. You know, usually you obtain all the permits and we begin construction. It's not one premise conditioned upon the other permit before they'll endorse the plans.
And, okay. And maybe we're getting ahead of ourselves because what I hear you saying, Rich, is that you don't agree with the scope of work as laid out by GPI, which is our, the first order of business before us, I guess, is.
I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not disagreeing with, I'm just saying it. The, the Board of Appeals is traditionally relied upon the comments from their town staff as it's presented in probably recommendations from the planning board. This is a little unique where it's, the recommendations are conditions of approval. And a lot of the material that, some of the material is repetitive. And does the board need to have that done again regarding dust, et cetera, when it's already been reviewed by your staff, the same type of professionals? So I'm just, we're just pointing that out, just recognizing, you know, for consistency.
Hey, oh, did you have something?
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with, with the applicant here. There is quite a bit of duplication, but one thing that I would want to like to have duplication on is that somebody can confirm whether this is the minimum amount of earth that can be removed. You know, I, I, you know, trucking routes, et cetera, are vetted. We have that information and they have vetted in a couple of other spots. So, you know, I'm, I'm not worried about that, but indeed we need to, you know, our charge here is, you know, is the minimum amount of earth being removed. And that, that I would like to have somebody validate.
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree. I, I, I agree. And I want to, but I want to go back to this, to the, something I'm still lost on with these lots. So if, I, I take your point that if the planning board, well, maybe I, maybe I think I understand. So if the planning board conditions prevailed, what I'm hearing you say is that, or I'm hearing from the appeal is that we wouldn't, that you would not be able to build anything here because of the conditions. And that's part of your appeal. So if the, if you prevail, then you would be doing this cutting. But I guess what I'm saying is in the planning boards, in the planning board conditions, would you be, if, if, if somebody said, here's a, here's a pile of money, build it, build it in accordance with the planning board specifications, do everything the planning board did and conditioned, and there's no economics to it. Would you actually be doing this grading plan or some other grading plan?
Let me address that, Jim. The conditions we.
This is the grading plan we need to do to comply with all your regulations. And if we'd have to build a wall, if you, we would have to show the lots. We discussed this with the planning board before they closed the hearing. We showed them the grading and, and talked about needing to properly enter those lots that they select to, to build the roads. And and that wasn't, that didn't show up.
I, 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 I hear what you're saying. I was just, I thought Jeff was just going to answer my question, which is not necessarily a legal question. I was just, I'm just trying to understand the background.
So, so the answer to your question is the appeals are on the town's ability to set aside five lots for a period of three years. That is not going to impact, the outcome of the court case is not going to impact what is before you. It would just be a factor of whether or not we could build right away, or we had to wait for the town to make a decision to, to acquire those lots. This plan will remain intact as you see it. And for what it's worth, Jim, the judges already put it into summary judgment. We're not too worked.
All right. Well, that, I mean, I just, I, like I said, I wasn't trying to get in the middle of a court case. I'm just trying to understand what, what it is we have here. I would agree. I would then go on to say that I, I really agree with. I, I think that, you know, Theo's got a lot more expertise in this kind of stuff that I do by factors of many. And, and I do think that I feel not, I don't feel qualified without the help of an expert to make that the judgment, for example, that about whether this is the minimum excavation amount. And obviously you all agree that there's an issue that is worth looking at over on that side with Center Village. So, so that I'll stop there. But I certainly, I certainly think that, that this is a situation where it's a help on the ex, on the town ID help as a board member on the expertise side because it's just, I just don't have any way of judging it.
I agree. And hey, oh, if you, with your knowledge, I mean, you said there are some things in here that are duplicative, I mean, that are repetitive, what we already know, of what we've already seen. Go back to GPI, have them take that stuff out. I mean, is it, I think it's an order of magnitude, whether that's worth it in terms of time and money. Because that would require having to go back and get a new proposal from them.
Yeah, well, but it's, it's, they just need to cut out some scope. I don't think it's a, I, I don't think it's a whole new start from scratch, right? You just, just pick out, you know, and it's, it's purely a kind of fill the calculation here that, that, that I'm after. We just need to have somebody validate whether this is the minimum amount, amount of soil that can be removed.
Oh, let, let me ask, Marsha, are you still on? I can't see you. So from procedurally, if we said, you know, continue this for a couple of months, well, this is all done, and then outside of this hearing, they go back and engineering and everyone agrees on a scope of work that maybe cuts out some of what Theo just said.
A revised scope of work.
Work. And then we could do that outside of, if we give them the time to do it outside of this hearing and they come back to us in a couple of months with the results or whatever it is, then can we, can we do that?
I think you, yes, I think you could. Yeah.
I'm just saying, we don't have, it's got to be this scope of work that's in front of us right now for, though I'm not hearing anything different from any one actually, that we do need an expert to come in and look at it and that there might be a little bit of work to be done, the scope of work for this proposal. Yes, Jeff.
Would I ask Theo to, if he looks at the scope, if we could agree on the first three bullet points and eliminate the bottom two? I don't understand the hydrology thing, oh, because we're not going near the water table. That was somebody who was ghost hunting.
Hang on, yeah, I should, that's, that's great.
I mean, there's a mention in the bylaw of effective drainage, right? Like is our, is that what they're getting at with hydrogeology here?
But all the drainage is already been approved by the planning board and headed by the engineering department.
Right. And then, and, and then the, it's condition of the planning board that there is a geo tank.
Condition 20 of the planning board decision that we have, we have, we have to have a geo check behind lots three and four prior to starting site work.
Yep. And that, and that's, that's where I would, and that's where I would be worried about any groundwater since you're cutting there and any, any water coming out of a slope. So I think that's, that's taken care of. So which, which one again, Jeff?
I'm saying we'll, we'll do the first three bullet points and eliminate the last two.
And, and I don't think you should feel, you should feel, if this is a legal issue, Theo, I wouldn't be trying to do it on the fly. So if we need to have some time to think about that.
No, 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 I'm just trying to read them. And that, and that's absolutely, that the information of bullet point five, five is, is readily available in, in all the documents. So I agree, the first three bullet points is what we need to, we need to have GPI look at.
Marshall, would it, would it make sense to go back to GPI and have engineering and GPI make sure that they're in agreement, that engineering is in agreement with this before the work is agreed on?
I think that would be wise, yes.
So relaying to them what we just said about points. Okay. I still want to open this up to public comment. So I don't know.
Other. All the, the only other, yeah. But I, I would just add to that, Marsha, that, you know, what the intent here of the board is, is to, is to efficiently and effectively get the information that we need. And we have, you know, we, we tend to, I think what you're hearing is we tend to, on, on block, first, on this read, we tend to agree with the applicant that this information is either already available or not. And those last two bullet points is either already available or not required. And if they can confirm that, that's great. And I think the applicant has agreed also that we'll do the first three things. And so, got it.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying.
Sorry, Elizabeth.
No, it's very helpful. Okay. Let me go ahead and open to public comments. I see some hands raised. Cynthia, do you want to go ahead? Just make sure to state your name and address for the record, please.
Actually, this is Cynthia's husband, Dan.
Actually, this is Cynthia's husband, Dan Stapleton. You can Cynthia's computer here.
Okay.
So I just have a clarification, a question for clarification by the board. So, and I did attend the planning board meetings on this project. So, and I, and I think I do understand what the purpose of today's meeting is. So my question about clarification is, is my understanding from the discussion that just occurred is the proposed plan is not consistent or assumes that the applicant's appeal will be successful. Is that correct?
No, I think what it, that, that, they, what they're saying, and Jeff, you can correct me, is that this is what, if their appeal is not successful, then they have to wait three years to have the town do then, to decide what to do with the five lots that are reserved. So they can't do this. If they lose their appeal, they can't do any of this until the town makes its next move and with, in the end of three years. Jeff, did I summarize that correctly?
Yes.
So are, are the lots in question related to the appeal within the proposed site disturbance and earthwork?
Yes.
We see on these plans?
Yes.
So if they were to lose the appeal, does approval now allow them to go do that site disturbance and earthwork within those lots?
No.
If they lose the appeal, then it's with the town's, Marsha, maybe you can speak to this more eloquently, but it's, it's now in the town's decision, what, what they want done with those lots, whether they are gonna purchase them for affordable housing, the three they're set aside for that, and whether there's gonna be a public park made with the other two.
But is the proposed grading the same regardless? Whether or not they lost the appeal or won the appeal?
Marshall?
I don't have an answer for that. I really don't know. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I guess, guess my question is why would the board approve a, a plan that would authorize site disturbance, tree removal, site stripping, grading, earthwork? If there's not clarity as to the extent that's ultimately gonna be approved? So that's the end of my question, I guess.
Okay.
Otherwise, wouldn't they just go out and disturb the area and do the earthwork and then say?
And of the
I can address that.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff, you, you addressed it earlier, so.
We can't do anything until the decision is recorded. The decision has not been recorded and can't be recorded until the court is resolved. So we're, we're, we're at a standstill until the court issue is resolved.
So even if there were approval today, work wouldn't start until that appeal is resolved?
That is correct.
And then if you were to lose the appeal, which I, you know, I don't
I really don't wanna talk about the court thing anymore.
My only question is, if you were to lose the appeal, would you go back with a revised plan for approval by this board?
I'm not gonna talk about the appeal anymore.
What, could I just interrupt? I think the question that you're getting at is what is the timing of this? Why are you doing this now? Why are you applying?
Basically, because in a lot of site development projects, the work, you know, you get this approval and the work advances. And then, once the work advances, you're kind of, you know, you've had a lot of that disturbance already occur.
Rich, you would bet that there's a condition that this is a, that you go out and get this from us?
Yes.
In the planning board decision?
Yes.
So I think, Rich, you acknowledged that that was a, yeah, okay, let's see.
I have to find it.
Yeah, so while he's looking, first, it's an unusual situation, because this is part of the planning board decision. And secondly, we, we, there is no, like, could we do this today? Because one of the things that everyone acknowledges is that we couldn't even make this decision without having expert back us up or give us some more information. So I think part of the planning, what the planning board was trying to do is to allow there to be, you know, the time to do that, so that if, as these other things are resolved, you're not just that you, you have the information.
Right, which I guess answers the question.
That may be an issue for the town in terms of its, you know, spending its resources without knowing what the town decision is. But I think that's a small number of resources, and the answer is it's not going to be decided tonight.
But Jim, just to clarify, the applicant is paying for the
Okay, well, so even better. But, you know, so, sorry about that. So, so I think that the, you know, it's, it's a good hypothetical, but I think the problem, the issue is, is, is it just, it is not going to be approved until such time as we get all of this information. And when we get all of this information, if the court case is still not resolved, then we will evaluate whether and to what extent that's an issue for our approval.
Okay, thank, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, no problem. Jack Madigan?
Hi, thank you. Jack Madigan, 215 Prairie Street. Part of the issue is the fact that they're seeking an approval for something that they've brought to court to try to stymie. So I mean, even the plan you're looking at right now would not be, if it were, if they were unsuccessful in court, it would not reflect this case either. Also, part of the thing, the two properties that would be taken aside, their goal and their aim for the entire property is to clearcut the entire thing and then take out all the, all the trees, all the roots, everything else, take out all that, and then bring in more fill, which would be quote, clean fill, and push it back so that the hill is all gone. Okay, that makes the two spots that were gonna be used for the, for potential parks useless, because it would just be green, you know, green space at that point, but not the wooded space that we're preferring to have. I mean, the real issue on this case is whether they would be, whether this property and this one lot that goes all the way into the back and takes, includes the hill and everything, whether that is a buildable site or not. And the question is, well, if you do enough work to it, and we're talking about 60,000 cubic yards of fill, okay? And that's what they're saying is the minimal. Okay, the question is, is it, is this site buildable with that type of thing? No one could tell us where else in Concord, they have done a 60,000 cubic yard of removal of, of any type of this amount of dirt. Okay, I mean, even the, the next one on the agenda tonight is 19,000 at the country club. We're talking 60,000. So there's not gonna be any trees there. And the entire site, which is currently a beautiful wooded site, is going to be vacant of all trees. So when they talk about going down to these cul-de-sacs, i- it's basically, you'll, it is gonna be open area. And the reason that it's so, they have to grade so much, okay? And due to the fact that they're putting in the roads, they're taking out all the trees. So, you know, Jeff is the one who said that they were clearcutting the entire site. So we have to take him at his word. But, you know, it just, to me, it does not seem like the plan for this piece of property with so much stuff having to be done to it. If they had used the natural grade of the site and encouraged, used the wooded areas and stuff like that, and situated the prop, you know, the homes better, I think it could have been a more attractive development instead of what it is, which is just a cookie cutter McMansion thing that could be in any of the towns and is not the type of thing that we should be putting in Concord. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who else has their hand up? Alan?
So I'm just gonna echo to some things that Jack has said.
Sorry, could you say your name and address?
Sorry, Ellen Quackenbush, 206 Prairie Street. And thanks for taking, for allowing me to make comments. I'm gonna echo some of the things that Jack said in terms of the extent of the change of this property. You're basically clearcutting and leveling everything. And some of the things that is dramatic is changing the existing contour. It's gonna change the view you see from the street. You can look straight back and you can see an elevated railroad track. It's gonna increase noise, because there's no longer gonna be trees or the hill, but it's gonna be a buffer to that noise. So both, I mean, I know Jeff said there's no impact on the butters, but I think the noise pollution is an impact on the butters. And also, the getting rid of the trees also would reduce air quality, which would be an impact on the butters. I looked at the Treekeeper 3 information that the town uses and estimated that the cost benefit analysis is way off. The cost of the trees that I estimated might be clear, and it's gonna be clear cut, it's probably gonna be more than I estimated, is something like $315,000 a year. So if you take 10 years, which is a reasonable planning period, that's over $3 million, which clearly seems like a large cost to the town. And that's both in energy heating, property value, and greenhouse gas emission. And the greenhouse gas emission is one that's really big. We have a carbon goal for this town to reduce by 80% in 2050. This clear cutting and removing of soil is going to increase carbon emissions by 7.8 million tons. And who's gonna pay for that? Does it need to reduce down to the 80% of 2050 Concord? So then by clearcutting, Sims is adding a cost to Concord to reach our environmental carbon reduction goals. So that's, that's it, you know, it's the, the cost, it's the carbon footprint, it's the noise, it's the impact on air quality and the fact that you look straight at that train track. Thank you.
Elizabeth, you muted. Not sure what he's saying.
Elizabeth?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry, I lost my screen there for a second, sorry. Okay, thank you, is what I was saying. So now I see, let's see, Mike?
Actually, there was a Paul Winkler, he was next.
Oh, sorry, Paul Winkler.
And then John Cooley, Mike Amster, and Pamela Drit.
Got it, okay, great. So go ahead with Paul.
All right, Paul Winkler, 1414 Main Street, and a butter to the project across Highland. Just wanna call this board's attention to, you know, in following along the planning board, they had many reservations with this project, in particular with regards to earth removal. And from what I recall, and the records can show, their thought at the end of the day was that the magnitude of the earth removal really was in the ZBA's purview. So they maybe didn't weigh in as heavily on that as they might. So in looking through the documentation, approval of this application, whatever form it is, will green light, based on their documentation and a little bit of math, a heavy truck leaving the site every seven to nine minutes or so for seven weeks. Extreme disadvantage, disbenefit, you know, whatever you wanna, however you wanna express it to a butters and the town. And, and that doesn't mention even the reverse trips, the noise, the smoke of the excavation and eiling equipment, really to remove every tree and reshape the lot. I am on record as having supported the previous PRD plan, because it brought some benefits to the town for the disruption. Even that plan required a quarter of the earth removal from the site. And, and oh, by the way, the earth removal from the site, you know, Jack earlier talked about, and Ellen talked about the, the changing of the site. You know, basically where the slope goes up now and hides things behind and presents a nice wooded frontage. This plan then, you know, sinks basically from where the hill goes up now, it will go straight down to the railroad tracks. So it, it really is a severe disruption. And there's words in the bylaws, as pointed out in some of the letters to the board, that, you know, preserving existing topography is a charge of, or is a thing that can be considered by the boards. So, you know, maximizing the profit of the developer is not a charge of this board. And the board, in, in their due diligence, found a way to disapprove the previous purity plan, which had a little more support. I urge this board to find a way to disapprove this application, you know, representing a plan that has even less support than the previous purity plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Marsha, who was next? Was it Pamela or?
John Cooley was next.
Hi, John.
Hi. Yeah, the
Sorry, can you just give your name and
The anecdote or the data, Paulie.
John, I'm sorry, can you give your, your name and address?
Yeah, could you hear me? I, I said John Cooley, Healy Island Street.
Oh, no, sorry, I didn't hear you. Go ahead.
Yep, sorry, sorry about that. I, I was, I was just saying that the, yeah. The
Oh, John, you're kinda cutting out. Can anyone hear that?
The trucks leave it.
Hey, John, you're, you're cutting out. Try, try again.
Yep, yep, any better?
Yeah.
All right, I'll try to keep it quick. The, you know, my concern is really related to that traffic coming and going during the project. We live on Highland Street, we watch kids come and go to school in the mornings. We have two kids of our own. I, I just, I don't see a way that it would, you know, those kids cross Main Street every day. I don't see that a way that this would not impact their safety. So that, that is something that I think we really have to consider strongly here. I also, I also agree with, you know, the previous comments that the, the earth removal is, is just objectively very, very extreme. And, you know, in relation to what's sort of written as a, you know, a baseline. So I, I, you know, I'm, I, I don't support those aspects of the plan. And I don't, you know, I haven't heard any kind of mitigation for the safety issue related to the, to the kids on the street.
Thank you. Marsha, who is next? Mike Amster. Mike?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Michael Amster, 44 Prairie Street. And with all the comments that have gone before me now, you've, you've cut about 90% of what I was gonna say, so thank you. And I think the board will probably thank me as well. Couple of things, this construction traffic, very interesting. We, we, we saw the, we saw the, the traffic review. Well, what we're talking about here is 5,000 round trips at least of, of heavy construction equipment back and forth with the, the movement of dirt and the, and the trees. And to, to John's comment, that's gonna put anybody who's on that road for at least three or years, or however, how long it takes to do this, it's gonna put them at risk. I looked through the, the special provisions of 7.5 and the special permit, 11.6. And I have a lot of trouble trying to even figure out what, if, if there's any of those comments that would support this plan. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I don't see anything. There's nothing in the project that really benefits the plan, or the, the town. The removal of more than 60,000 cubic feet of soil, clearcutting the mature forested land and devastates the, the land that they claim all, that is already suitable. Somebody else brought that up, too. We're gonna have to, we're gonna pull out all this, all the, all this dirt, all this forested land, and then it's gonna be suitable. Well, it really isn't suitable now, not even close. The project is not clearly in the best interest of the town for the, for now or in the future. And I would hope that the board considers this carefully, hopefully coming to the conclusion that they can approve this, because this is not an extension on somebody's backyard porch. This is gonna have huge ramifications to the, to Because this is not an extension on somebody's backyard porch. This is going to have huge ramifications to, to the town. And thank you.
Thank you. Marsha, where are we now?
Pamela Drit.
Pamela.
Hi, thank you. Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green, Unit 4. I agree with all of the previous speakers and the letters which were well-written that were submitted. And I want to point out that there's more at stake here than just removal and fill of land. The, the forest and the natural plantings are not only support biodiversity and healthy ecosystems, they produce oxygen, remove carbon, clean pollutants out of the air, create sound buffers, and fix carbon in the soil itself. And these carbon sink areas are really necessary for Concord to fight the climate change and achieve the town meeting sustainability goals towards carbon neutrality for Concord. I was at the planning board meetings for the planned residential development, and I was in favor of the design for that, but not the buildings, which were not, the developer refused to consider doing net zero and electric buildings. And that's why I do believe that the planned residential development was not accepted. This is far worse than that. This would destroy the ecology and, and take what is a, a net benefit to our, our greenhouse gas attempts to, to get carbon neutral and make it worse and contribute polluting buildings that we will have to mitigate in the future when for a very little cost at the beginning, this project could contribute. And, and, and I think we should, we, Concord has very little undeveloped land left. And we can't afford to give special permits for any reason to any project that doesn't deliver clear and substantial social, environmental, and economic benefits to our town that make up for the environmental destruction the special permit allows. And this one clearly doesn't do this.
Thank you, Pamela.
Please don't approve this. The developer at that time of the planned residential community was clearly pretty much using the threat of this exact development as a, as a, as a lever to pressure, to pressure the community to approve the planned residential development without putting in net zero and non-fossil and electric building plans.
Thank you.
He said as much as we were leaving. He could, he could still make a development that we would support.
Okay. Thank you.
Not this one. This is too destructive. It doesn't meet the, 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 it doesn't meet I, any of those three criteria.
Okay, great. Thank you, Pamela. I think we've, we've definitely heard what you have had to say. Marsha, are there other people?
There, Josh Latham, the attorney for-
Yeah, anyone else besides Josh? Sorry.
Scott Richardson was unable to raise his hand, but he did let me know.
Let me just take the, the public, Josh, and I'll get back to you. Scott, go ahead.
Scott Richardson, 260 Elsinore Street. Two comments. If the zoning board of appeals approves the special permit for the earth removal, how will you ever not allow any other earth removal in the future? You know, what, what grounds are there that could possibly be more challenging in terms of earth removal? You have a relatively densely populated neighborhood. You have a school a half a mile away. You have a busy road with, already has a lot of traffic on it. You have children who walk to school right by this area. So you're going to have all that traffic, all that dust, all that noise associated with 60,000 cubic yards of earth coming off, which is, what, four or five times the, the maximum amount, again, if you allow 1,000 cubic yards per lot. So you're completely altering the topography so that they can build these houses. How will you ever say no to any earth removal in the future? That's one thought. The second thing is, I, I want to say that there's a lot of people in this town who are following this development, who are against this development. Where are the people who want this development? Where are the people that the builder has been working with who think this is a great idea? Where are all the Concord residents who think this is the right plan for our community? I, I don't hear any of them. I don't see any of them. And I think the zoning board of appeals needs to honor the intention of the special permit, which says that you don't get to turn our neighborhood into a quarry and take everything out of it and do whatever you want with it. You don't get to do that. There's, there's zoning laws for that reason. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
There's no one else that I'm aware of, so.
Josh, if you want to go ahead.
Thank you very much. Attorney Josh Latham for the applicant. I just want to quickly summarize a few points, just, just to have it for the record. Obviously, the first point is that this is an earth removal by law. And just to bring it back to the issue at hand that is really before the board is one of, of specific concern is the question of earth removal. We certainly understand here a lot of other concerns relative to tree removal, relative to aesthetic, sound questions. I just do want to bring it back that this is an earth removal by law, and that's really what we're trying to approach with the board. And we fully support the idea of having the peer review done. Obviously, whenever you're balancing property interests with public policy, there's going to be a clash sometimes. The result of this, this plan before you is what the law requires for subdivision, health, engineering, traffic, and so forth. Those are a lot of other public policy requirements. What I would simply like to close with is that, you know, we're presenting to a, a plan that has been approved. We certainly have a couple of conditions that are under appeal right now. Just to clarify the record for sequence, this won't get built until that's resolved. So when the board acts on this application, it doesn't mean we're going out there and suddenly disturbing the site and doing anything. I just want to make sure the public understands that piece of it. And that's all. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, Marsha, I don't see any.
I don't see any either.
Let's go ahead and close public comment. It seems pretty clear where we're going to end up tonight, which is sending this back to GPI and engineering and the applicant to come up with an amended scope of work. Any comments from the board about that? I think it's going to take long enough, from what I can hear, that it probably makes sense to continue this out at least two months.
Makes sense to me.
So that would be until our, May, I have no idea when that meeting has. I don't know when the May meeting is either. So Heather, do you have that?
It's June 10th, Elizabeth.
June 10th. The applicant, I mean, feel free to take more time if you think you need it.
I, I think we can go with June 10th, and if we're not ready by then, we'll extend.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other comments from the board? And I'm not dismissing everything we've just heard. I just think that we're still in an information gathering stage, and this letter for, this review by GPI will be, will be helpful.
Agreed.
Great. So if there are no other comments, I will go ahead and take a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the special permit for earth removal for Siamese Development at 146B and 1442 Main Street to continue the hearing till June 10th.
At 7:05 or where are we?
I'd say it's two, two months, so that should be 7:05.
Yeah.
Or 7.
Heather, are you there? Are we 7:05 on that?
I don't have new applications for June, so.
Seven o'clock.
Fantastic. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hi, Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Hi.
Chris Moore, hi. Great, we will see you in June.
Do we, sorry, Elizabeth, do we also have to do something with this scope of work or not? Or is that already?
I, I think Marsha's bringing it back to engineering.
Okay.
We understand from Theo that the last two items do not appear to be necessary, that the information has been provided. And I will be confirming that with our engineering staff and working out a revised scope with GPI. And then just making sure that we've got everything that we need and then providing it to Siamese to provide the check and, and go forward from here.
Okay, thank you. I apologize to people for not being able to put my video on, but I was just having trouble with the internet. So, so there's no, so there's no requirement for us to act further on that. Good. Got it.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Night. All right, moving on. 720 Concord Country Club is, I don't know if-
Hey, Elizabeth, I'm right here.
Hi, yeah, I'm just wondering about Theo because we need him for this, because Jim, you're not voting on this, right? Is this the one that you-
No, I think I can vote from this.
Okay. Oh, anyway.
I mean, I don't know, did I, I'm sorry, Heather, I, I know I listened to a hearing and then there was, that was the, that was the one on, by the, by the cemetery.
All right, forget it. You're fine on this one. You're fine. Uh, someone has their, oh, there we go. Okay, great, sorry. A Cocker Country Club. All right, so since we last met, we had a site visit. You submitted a landscape plan. There were some questions about that plan. You wrote back. I'm assuming most of us did not have time to look at that, what we received back, since that was this afternoon. I guess if the applicant wants to provide a brief update or brief overview of what you've submitted since we last met.
Yeah, yeah, I'm almost at.
Okay, good.
Okay, good evening. My name is Gregson Carter. I'm the general manager of Concord Country Club. I'd like to thank you for taking the time to consider our irrigation pond project again, and for coming out to the site visit in the project in more detail on Monday, March 29. We work with the committee in the town since we notified in the fall of 2019 that we began work without the proper permits. Again, I wish to apologize to everyone for not being aware of the town bylaws and for causing any hard feelings. It was never our intention to not get the proper permits for this project or to upset anyone in the community. We had always intended to submit the request for the proper permits, which we had done for the Palm Palace and the stream crossings. However, this was our oversight and mistake by us, and we're sorry that this happened. We've been part of the community for over 100 years, and will continue to do so in a positive and thoughtful manner going forward. As previously noted, our system is approximately 25 years old and is drawing water directly from the ground, provided by two wells pumping to a system, which is antiquated and operating at 50% efficiency. In summary and as modified, we are looking to build an approximate 3 million gallon retention pond on the southwestern portion of a golf course, behind the 16th green and to the right of the third tee. Since our original application, we have deleted the removal of all earth from the proposed project, except for the 1,200 cubic yards previously removed. If approved and going forward, no more material will be removed from the site. This location, after evaluation of other locations, was deemed the best and most suitable based upon site, physical limitations, environmental considerations, and construction impacts, among other criterias, including the capability, compatibility, and irrigation as a feature of the golf course. As mentioned and submitted, we are replacing our aging irrigation system, and the need for a retention pond allows us to operate the system in a more efficient way, which benefits not only the club, but the town as well. In addition, the new pond will not change the, the daily average water use and will have significant advantages to the groundwater supply caused by a dramatic reduction in the instantaneous demand from the wells. Instead of operating both wells at full demand, only one well would be used at a time as the refill can take place over a longer period of time. We will also be assisting in the water application control as the new system would utilize the pond as a holding vessel to store water so the same volume can be applied, but at a greater rate, which is desirable for several reasons, which I've outlined in my correspondence after the site visit. The irrigation pond will also reduce the wear and tear on our equipment. As drawing water directly from the ground, we are pulling sediment, sand, and debris, which is causing damage and breakdowns of our irrigation piping and control heads. The pond also addresses the sustainability and alternative sources for capturing water long-term, in with natural rainfall and snowmelt, which reduce the drawing of water from the ground, especially during drought conditions. Another benefit of the pond allows the club flexibility that if for some reason we cannot pump from the wells for a period of time due to mechanical or drought issues, the pond allows an alternative water source until either the repairs are completed or water becomes available, especially during drought conditions. Also, as stated in a previous correspondence concerning the bylaw 11.1, 11.6.1 through 11.6.6, we do not feel there are any negative impacts economically or community needs for this project. We believe there will be no impacts on the traffic flow or safety concern as this project is located in the back area of the property away from the general public. We will not be affecting the adequacies of the utilities or other public services once this project is completed. There will be no burden on any existing utilities or public services. And in fact, the proposed water management plan and monitoring laws in partnership with the town will be beneficial. We further believe the impacts of the neighborhood's character will not affect as the closest neighbor based upon Google Maps to the site is over 200 feet away, with others being as much as 500 feet. However, we have provided a planting plan for the area to the southwest portion of the work site. And when completed, we will have over 120 shrubs, low grasses, and 15 black cherry and red maple trees planted along the upland slope, covering close to an acre of land. Being a golf course, we understand the impacts to the natural environments, topographies, and open spaces. And we believe we have designated this, designed this project to not alter the character of the neighborhood while maintaining the current stormwater runoff in ground flows. Finally, we strongly believe there are no fiscal impacts to the town services, no negative impacts to the tax base or the town, or affect any jobs or employment, and will over time benefit the town's water supply. With us this evening is Paul Kirchner, our engineer from Stansky and McNary, Peter Newton, our hydro geologist from Bristol Engineering, Paul Roche, our irrigation design designer from Gulf Water, Dave Crossman, our wetland scientist from B&amp;C Associates, John Brady, our attorney and legal counsel, Peter Repoche, our golf course superintendent, as well as John Thompson, our club president. Again, I thank you for your time, and we look forward to answering any questions in hopes of a positive outcome.
Thank you. I'm going to start by opening it up to questions from the board. Theo, I'm looking at you probably wanting to get your questions out there for the hydrologists here.
So, so thank you for entertaining us on the golf course, let's say, a week and a half ago. I, I learned a lot. And some of my concerns have been, have been put to bed. I, my concerns were mainly related, well, to the- my concerns were mainly related, well, to the uh, the water supply for the town. And I think uh water superintendent has has put those, those concerns to bed, I think, at the, at the, at the site visit. So I, I, I I appreciate that and I thought it was a really good, really good site visit. I did, did, we did ask on uh, we had to site visit. We, I did ask uh some documentation whether or not this could be an underground storage system. It was said no at the golf course and I was hoping to get something more definitive and uh reasoning, a reasoning for that, so. And as, 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 as Elizabeth said, I, I, I saw the planting plan. And it's, yes, it's a planting plan, but I, I, you know, the, the, the could. I'm, I'm not sure whether that's a planting plan that sufficiently addresses neighbor, neighbors' concerns. And I, I do think, you know, that, that could be addressed better by being a bit more specific by adding, yeah, and I, I, I won't go. I won't go there, but one, one of the items that I, I looked at is like, you know, you, you are playing across this water feature. If it remains a water feature, you're playing across it. So you need to mow somewhere. Uh, I would, I would assume and, you know, I towards the neighbors where you wanted the native seed mix, you know, I, there's gotta be a mow line somewhere where you stop mowing. So that, that indeed, the, the original forest can somewhat develop again. And, you know, I, I Yeah, that's, that's really where I, where I wanted to push it. Um, I, I looked at the plant plan again and, and, you know, it, it I, I don't think it's getting us where we wanna be from a, especially from a neighbor's point of view. Anyway, that's, that's that's what I had for now.
Thank you. And yeah, I mean, I think that's what Elizabeth was getting at and Marcia, you can probably speak to that too. Having a landscape architect do the the planting plan, is that something?
Yeah, and it, and it, and it, this has nothing to do with species, but it has more about to do with about a vision on what's, what is this, this gonna look like in the end of the day? And, you know, where's the mow line? How does that, that forest interact with the play of golf? Instead of, you know, and I'm not concerned about the species, although I think, you know, some white pines would be nice or some evergreens, but it's, it's more about the vision than the species.
Theo, I agree with you in, in terms of the abutters as well. And I'm also wondering whether we should be considering planting on some abutters uh yards if they can't plant in the buffer zone, if there's some, you know, mitigation that could be done on, in conjunction with the neighbors in, in, on their properties.
Peter Repoche is the superintendent. If he, if you'd like, he can address the issue for the planting, so the, of the cutting of the grass. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, that, that would be helpful.
Peter? Peter Repoche, do you?
Hi, uh, good evening. Peter Repoche, golf course superintendent um at Concord Country Club. Thank you for a few minutes. Thank you for coming to the site walk on Monday, March twenty-nine. Uh, in terms of your answer to uh your question, uh, in terms of the mowing lines, um if you're orienting yourself at the pond, um, the whole south end, basically the proposed bank of the berm on the south and west side of the pond would be, um, wouldn't be mowed. It'd be a native um planting, native mix of grass. So it would be tall grass. We would let it go native. Um, you would be mowing essentially from the top half, the north and the east side of the uh, the pond. Along the top end, the rest of it, we would leave native to kind of tie into the natural forest and kind of let that end restore as it goes down to the infiltration basin. So that's kind of how we would delineate that line from the tee that you looked at on the uh southwest side of the property uh as you're heading, uh, looking east.
Thanks. So we, we, I, I, I think for clarity and, and for approvals that would be aligned needs to be shown on a plan somewhere.
We can, we can put that in if you wanted. That could be added as a condition. Um, we could, we could do that.
Theo, if you don't have any other questions?
No, not, not at this moment. Thank you.
Jim, Robbie?
I, I, I think I just kind of want to echo a theme of you know, your and Theo's comments, which is there are significant neighborhood concerns that have been expressed. You know, relating to the what is this gonna look like long term for our, the folks that live on the street and have to look at it every day? You know, what, what sort of mitigation or remediation to, you know, the, the tree removal uh is gonna be done? And I, I think a lot of that can be addressed with, you know, some of what Theo's been asking and, and the additional sort of landscape detail that we're asking for here. And I, I think it can hopefully be presented in a way that it speaks to some of those neighborhood concerns. Yeah, and, and it's presented as responsive to them.
Could I also propose that the neighbors could uh be part of these discussions, that there could be some conversations between and some walking and discussions between the, the country club and the neighbors? I don't see a reason why there couldn't be or shouldn't be.
Correct.
Did you just, and, and from what I said, that some of the planting might end up being on the neighbors' properties if it's, if it's not possible to do it, you know, on, on the country club property.
We can certainly take a look at it. Like I said, there, you know, when you, when you look at it, the closest and I, and I measured the, when I, when I was out there, I measured the, the stake that was in the proposed area of removing some trees. So I measured that stake to that red shed. That was the closest that I could see. I don't know the exact property line from that red shed, but I went from there back to that and that was over two hundred feet from there. You know, I was walking, obviously, so, uh, but it was, it was approximately two hundred feet beyond that from the shed to that stake. And that was the closest. As you get to other areas and other properties, then it gets farther away. Um, and I think as, as we, everything grows in, especially uh now as that we're getting into the growing season. Uh, I think a lot of that will be shared. So, yeah, we could definitely look at that and be, you know, we, as I said, that could be something we put in as a condition. And once we get it done, we'll plant it. Once we had everything's done, we'll be doing the plantings after. As we said, and we could, we could address that then.
I mean, I think where I am kind of Theo is where you are and Robbie where you are, which is that it was good to hear that the water from the town engineer, that the water monitoring and all that, this would all be an improvement. So that's great. But I still wanna address kind of what's been done and, and how to make it more tenable for, for the neighbors. Um, Jim, did you have anything? I don't, I don't know if he's nodding or not, so, um, let me.
Sorry, I, nothing, nothing to add, sorry. I, I, I'm, again, I, I apologize, but I just, I'm not getting good connection if I have my video on.
Okay, no problem. Um, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment. Um, let me do that. And.
Yeah, hi. I don't know, I'm, don't, couldn't raise my hand. Hi, um, my name is Baron Kamjean. Uh, I live at ninety-nine Williams Road. Um, and I am one of the uh abutters um who has been uh observing this project as it commenced and, and in fact, in the early stages, when we noticed the uh tree cutting out on the hill. And it is a, quite a significant hill. It's, it's about sixty feet high. And it's behind our property, so elevated that when you look out, uh, even when you pull in the driveway, you can see around uh what was a forested woodland uh historically in the, in the thirteen years we've lived here. And when we did inquire um about what was going on there, we received information that they were doing some trimming along the perimeter, uh, some tree cutting. And we knew that they were allowed to do that. But then the work continued and uh it ended up that four acres of trees were cleared. And we noticed that they were getting into an area that was very close to uh the wetlands. And so we expressed our concern and our concerns are not just about uh visibility, but there were also environmental concerns. I mean, we live on the Jenny Dugan Brook, which is a protected uh well, uh, stream and, and the associated wetlands. And so uh we've done, and I've done extensive work in, in the area of landscaping and screening and I'm familiar with construction projects and, and all of the things that go along with them. But this seemed uncharacteristic for the Concord Country Club. And we had always, uh, in the past, anytime there were any kind of um projects or things that might have an impact, uh, we were notified as per se, uh, whether it was mandated or not. And we were not in this case. And in fact, uh, we ended up being um rebuffed in, in our inquiries and we so I, I just wanted to put out there that um from observing this project uh and, and the implications, um I, I'm very concerned. Uh, and I understand the uh water and the engineering. I want to thank the board for all their thoughtful questions. Various boards and staff and, and, and I really have been impressed with all the town officials. But uh, I think there's a lot here that hasn't been unpacked and we're so focused on some of these short-term issues that I, I mean, there's just a litany of things um that I want to speak to. Um, and I don't know what form to do it in, but I feel that some of these things have been misrepresented and some of the statements that I, um, you know, that are stated as definitive, such as the average uh water usage will not increase. And some other, uh, there's no environmental impact, uh, even though um there is significant environmental impact and that needs to be considered as part of this project. I mean, they clear cut four acres of forest, they excavated, they changed the topography. And this thirty-foot berm, uh, which normally it is in full visibility, uh, would be a design consideration. And we might talk about the height of the berm or the size of the pond. Uh, none of these issues are now being evaluated because they've done all this work to clear cut, they're changing the topography. And I can assure you uh that no amount of screening uh will ever replace the changes to the topography and the fact that this open pond will be situated in full visibility. And we've been told that if it falls below fifty percent that it was by the uh town's water consultant, the town's um independent consultant, that these things become an eyesore and the vegetation can decay. And foul odors. And there's wildlife considerations and pond management considerations about wild uh geese uh and mosquitoes and, and things that have been asked by various boards, um, things such as evaporation. You know, there, there's gonna be potential for increased electricity usage during the day while the two pond, uh, pumps are replenishing the pond and uh I know that these are during times of extreme heat when there's peak demand on town uh energy and town electricity. And so they used to be constrained by only being able to pump in the evenings and by the rate of the um pumping. And so now they're doubling the effective rate from the pond, but the pond will need to be replenished. And so they can pump for twenty-four hours straight from these ground wells. And they will have to maintain this level, as I mentioned, at fifty percent and more. And we don't know how any of this is gonna be done. So I, I, I don't know, you know, I know I've taken some time. I appreciate all your questions and patience and everything's been thoughtful. And I, we'd like to take them on their word that, you know, this um is something that they will uh look into and work with us on. But I can tell you just the fact that you, um, the general manager is sitting uh before us and telling me that he's looking at Google Earth or Google Maps and yet in his submission, he states that it will have no detrimental impact, detrimental impact on the um sightlines to the neighborhood. I can tell you, assure you that from many windows in our house, from our backyard, from our driveway, this does, the berm will have and this pond will be in full visibility. And it's not gonna be pleasant. It's taking a natural sloped wooded forest. And I understand they had a right to cut trees. But the other thing that they haven't liked to divulge here is that, as they uh explained last time, the trees uh create debris and falling leaves and all of these things plug the pond and can cause maintenance issues. And so there's an ongoing maintenance concern. It's a large shallow pond, which gives an algae concern. And there's evaporation concerns, none of which have been studied or evaluated. And so um I think that when they make these definitive statements, and we don't know, you know, what their future plans are, and given how um easily they cut down these trees, they may plant some. They may take out more tomorrow. We don't know. And so I understand, as you mentioned last time, there are some trust issues and, and there, there are um for good reason, because um this is concerning to us as residents, as people who are concerned about the environment and the wetlands. And I know the NRC also um in their recommendation stated very clearly that they wanted to not just assess the impact on the groundwater as it pertained to town drinking water, but they also noted that this acre plus pond was gonna deprive the wetlands of uh surface runoff and snow melt and other water sources. And they wanted a evaluation done by a third party independent to determine exactly what the environmental impacts will be. And so I think there's a lot of studies out there that need to be done. There's a lot of discussion that needs to happen. And I thank you for your time and, and everyone else's efforts regarding this.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna keep going with public comment and then we can circle back on some of those questions. John Thompson, I don't know who raised their hand first, but. John?
He's muted.
Oh, John, you are muted. John Thompson.
John, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay.
He, he's here.
John, are you? No, all right. Well, we can come back to you after. Let me, let me go to someone else and we'll come back to you. Jack Madigan.
Hi, Jack Madigan, two-one-five Prairie Street. I just had a question regarding uh some of the points that Mr. Kamjean was making with regard to the it seems like most of the work has been done. It was done without an approval or any type of permitting. What is the repercussions here? Is there anything that the town, does the engineering firm get reported to the state? Does, you know, does the uh does the country club get listed to the state? I mean, is there any type of uh repercussions? Or, you know, we're just out of luck because they've already done all the work and now we're trying to mitigate where they should put trees because, you know, to cover up what they've done. Uh, it just seems to me that we're doing this a little backwards. Uh, I know you have no choice because that's the way it is. Uh, but I just don't understand whether there are any type of you know, repercussions. Every job site I've ever been on, that anyone who's about to dig is like, hey, do we got the permits? Let me see them. I don't understand how this heavy equipment was able to be moved in there and no one asked to see where the permits were. And there were no permits. And I just don't understand how that is possible. And my last point is just the fact that I don't understand how this pond is not gonna impact uh the Jenny Dugan uh Brook and how that's not the, the runoff to that and to the wetlands that are all around there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, again, I'm gonna keep going and then we can.
Am I on by any chance?
Yes, you're on.
I apologize. My daughter calls me a dinosaur and that's probably very accurate. My name's John Thompson, two-two-one Fairhaven Hill Road. I was a five-year resident of seventy Williams Road in the mid nineties, so I know and appreciate the Williams Road neighborhood. I will say that beaver activity has certainly impacted the neighborhood and the Jenny Dugan next to my old house. I've been a lifelong member of the Concord Country Club and currently serve as president. Since nineteen thirteen, when members of the Concord Golf Club, excuse me, purchased the John Brown Farm from the, his estate, we have been proud stewards of our two hundred-plus acres, preserving and protecting our mostly open space. We have worked to balance recreation with conservation and preservation. I'm confident a hundred years from now, my successors will continue to be able to make that claim of conscientious stewardship. There is no argument that club made mistakes in our pursuit of water storage. We regret that and with guidance from the NRC, DPW, Town Engineering and the ZBA, we have worked to correct those mistakes. We have heard the concerns and issues. We are now working to cultivate a partnership with all the stakeholders. We are trying to comply with every request the ZBA and other departments have asked for, as well as softening the impact on the Williams Road neighborhood. We have demonstrated our proposed partnership with the Town Water and Sewer Department will be a ben- benefit for the town's management of its drinking water supply on Old Road, particularly during drought situations. We hope the ZBA can look past the emotion and instead consider the science behind our project. We hope the ZBA can look past the emotion and instead consider the science behind our project. In the interests of more sustainable water management, we hope the ZBA will approve our permit for irrigation water storage. I'd like to thank you and the ZBA for their support and for their work on behalf of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Marsha, I see Deborah. Sorry, anyone else?
I don't see anyone else. That's
Can I, sorry, can I say something?
I'm sorry.
Rebecca Comgene, ninety-nine Williams
Rebecca, can you wait a second? We were just, we called on Deborah first.
Oh, sure. I didn't hear that. Sure.
I'm Deborah, yeah, one-fifteen Williams Road. We've only been here a few years, but I believe I'm the largest abutter to the country club. And, you know, one of my concerns is that I've actually never sat down with the country club and met and don't have a true understanding of what the project is, other than these meetings and what you plan to do, and if there is another alternative or what you're actually going to do. And I think that that's a missed opportunity, both on the country club's part and on our part. And I would ask that perhaps the, rather than put the burden on this meeting, and I know that you guys have been great, but I would ask that the country club reach out to the abutters and perhaps communicate a little better and let us know what the scope of this project is. And, you know, instead of looking back on what you didn't do right, and understand, and we all understand that some mistakes were made, but perhaps we could go look ahead and you communicate with us and let us know what you're going to do moving forward. And if this is the best project, and you think this is the best project, and there are no other sites on the course that are better, then maybe you should communicate that with us, and maybe you should sit down with us. And, you know, we are neighbors, so maybe you could treat us as neighbors and communicate what you're going to do rather than let us come into these meetings and hear it. So many of us have been going over to the club for many years, and we'd like to understand and support what you're going to do. So, and that's all. I think we can be better neighbors and perhaps not be adversaries in these meetings. So I would ask that we could get together outside of these meetings and understand what you're going to do. And if there's a better way that we could work together for some resolution without putting the onus on this committee. So that's all. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Rebecca, and then McGregor.
Greg can go first. I'll go after Greg.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you and good evening. Good work so far. Picking up on Mr. Madigan's point, which is legal, I'll address only legal points. First of all, the answer to his question is
Sorry, Greg, you need to get, you need to do your name and address and all that for the record.
And I apologize. Gregor McGregor, Seventy Williams Road. I live in John Thompson's old house. John and his lovely wife and his then infant fixed it up and modernized it. Thank you, John. I'm right across the street from the Comgenes. I'm speaking to the legal aspects of what's before us, and particularly to the point of Mr. Madigan. What do we do about the jumping the gun, violating the law, admitting after the fact that they needed a permit, and now downscaling the project in an application, which is merely to finish it off and not take dirt out of town? The answer is, this is an after-the-fact application. They shrank the application to avoid the problems caused by seeking permission to take the earth out of town, probably at a profit. That does not eliminate the jurisdiction of this board over that part of the project. The club needs this board's approval for that part of the project already completed. As I made the point last meeting, the board has the power, the authority, the legal right, to say they won't consider the rest of the project until there is restoration of the part of the project that jumped the gun illegally. Mr. Madigan, that's the answer. This board has authority, and this club needs approval of what it already did within the jurisdiction of this board by their downscaling the project, which, by the way, is what usually happens in after-the-fact applications all over Massachusetts. They have not deprived the board of jurisdiction. They've just gotten smart and stuck to the, what they say is the minimum they need to accomplish the rest of their purpose. And now I turn to the merits of what it is they seek with their permit going forward. They need to satisfy special permit requirements in section eleven-six, eleven-point-six. And everything we're talking about, about downscaling mitigation, minimizing good relations, open communications, transparency, rethinking, and apologies, everything we have heard so far, as well as the general statements from the club manager that they meet the standards. That's the evidence you have in front of you. The general manager says they meet the standards. Has to come down to the test that's in our zoning bylaw. You don't need me to read it, but I will for those who haven't read it before or don't remember it. To get this permit, you have to be satisfied, or shall I say, they have to satisfy you on the record, on the written record before you, that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the public interest, the town and the neighborhood. It is my opinion, and I ask you to agree with me in a denial decision that you wish issued sooner rather than later, that there are no beneficial impacts to the public interest, the town, and the neighborhood. So they can never satisfy this balancing test, which is the law you apply. This is the criterion. You have to be satisfied that the adverse effects of the proposed use, which have been discussed and identified, will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the public interest, the town, and the neighborhood, and there are none. That's what I'm saying on the record. They have no public benefits of this project. They have not offered any. They have not mentioned any. They have not negotiated any. I'm familiar with club projects all over New England. Recreational clubs, golf clubs, swimming clubs, boating clubs, all kinds of clubs. And they always offer public spaces. They always offer public amenities. They always offer off-site improvements to infrastructure or public facilities, or even provide land adding to the parks or recreation or playground areas of the town. And this club has not done one thing to satisfy that on the two sides of the balance, there's anything on the public benefit side. Oh, yes, they say they've downscaled the project. They've mitigated, they're prepared to mitigate it and prepared to negotiate or discuss at least more mitigation, but they have not offered any public benefit for this project. There's no water coming to the town. There's no backup water system in case the town needs it. I've seen these in club projects. There's no walking trail around the project. So therefore, I would urge you that you cut this shorter than the years this will take. And simply disapprove the project, disapprove the part of the project they already completed, and then leave it to them to tell you what they're going to do about it. I assume it'll be restoration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rebecca.
Thank you. Rebecca Comgene, ninety-nine Williams Road. Thank you again to the board. I know this has been ongoing, so appreciate your time and effort on this. I just wanted to say, you know, history has shown, and based on the filings by the country club, the response to these issues has just been to deny and minimize what they're doing has any impact on the town or the other parties. I mean, just looking at the history, they denied they were doing work in a restricted area. They denied they were doing work within four feet of historical groundwater. They denied the extent of the work they were doing originally. They had told concerned neighbors they were doing just a little bit of tree work. They denied town representatives from coming on property to see the work that was being done. The country club didn't stop work until they were ordered to by the town, which was only after concerned neighbors repeatedly notified the town that they were still working. The country club has shown that they are acting in self-interest and without consideration for other parties. A lot of their application relies on opinions, promises, and commitments that are not enforceable. Given the history of the general manager, which includes the unpermitted violations done at the Salem Country Club to create a parking lot in a protected area, where once again concerned residents reported tree clearing, and that a new parking lot was in place. The general manager denied any wrongdoing, but ultimately was found in violation and ordered to restore the area. Given this track record of violations relying on management commitments is not in the best interest of the town or their residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Carol Smith.
And Sharon McGregor. Sharon actually had her hand up first.
Sharon, why don't we start with you then?
Thank you. Sharon McGregor, Seventy Williams Road. I have in the back of me my backyard, which is the environment of Williams Road that we live in. And it's spectacularly beautiful, and in back of me is the work of beavers who are doing the job of restoring water to the landscape so that we can have a healthy environment. And that is what we have all around our neighborhood, including on the golf course. And it cannot be overstated, the impact of what was already done at the golf course in terms of the destruction, the loss of nature, the loss of habitat, the loss of ecosystem services, the threats to the groundwater. All of that is a huge impact on the neighborhood. And what I'd like to add only one thing to what others have said, everyone has spoken eloquently and right on point. The country club at the very least should do a thoughtful, thorough alternatives analysis that looks at very carefully the no-build option. Now, my husband Greg spoke about denial by this ZBA, and I'm certainly asking for that. But should anything proceed from there, there must be a look at the no-build alternative, which is recognizing that there are other means for meeting the water needs of the country club. That includes water conservation, sustainable turf management, more plantings, restore everything you've already taken away, put back the topography also, add more vegetation and retain water on the landscape to infiltrate the groundwater that you can then use. That is how you get more water. And I strongly urge that this be done. And a no is not accepted. You must do a look at no-build and the other options for meeting your water needs. I thank you. All of us will thank you, and you will be pleased. Your country club will be very pleased with the result. And you will save lots of money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Carol Smith, sixty-five Williams Road. And I just want to say that my neighbors have spoken pretty eloquently in a lot of ways, particularly the Comgenes and the McGregor's, and I really share a lot of the concerns. I think particularly for me, I share the concern about the pond, the location of the pond, excess mosquitoes, the maintenance of it, the maintenance of it if the water level goes low. So that's sort of a big piece for me, although I really, you know, share a lot of the other concerns as well. Additionally, the fact of the country club not reaching out, I feel like I would like to be a lot better informed about what the project is and about what some of the options are, and just what the plan for the country club is. I don't feel like I have the information that I really need or wish I did at this stage and would look to the country club to reach out to us at the neighborhood to really work with us more. Thank you.
Thank you. Marsha, do you see anything else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
I'm sorry. I think, Peter, were you going to address the water thing?
Yeah, so I just wanted to wait till everybody had their say, but regarding the, this is Peter Newton, Bristol Engineering Advisors, consultant for the club. Regarding the public benefit comment, conversations with Concord Public Works, the water department folks, make it very clear that decoupling of the irrigation from the wells is, in their perspective, a significant public benefit. The other thing to consider is that the brook is, in addition to surface, you know, to rainfall, is largely groundwater-fed, and reducing pumping from the wells during dry periods will actually likely help maintain flows in the streams during dry periods. So, you know, I think, I think to say that there's no public benefit is probably, you know, a debatable statement.
Let me go ahead and close public comment, and then let me put it back to the board. Comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
I'm sorry.
I think I just took myself off of mute. My name is Paul Roche. I'm the golf course irrigation consultant for Concord Country Club. Can I have a couple of words?
Go ahead.
So there was a couple of comments came up. One was addressing water use. Any full water use study has been done on the golf course, and it would not use more water with the new irrigation system. In fact, we're looking at increasing uniformity quite dramatically. In two thousand seventeen, we did a detailed water distribution audit analysis on the property, which kind of revealed some of the shortcomings in the uniformity of an aging irrigation system. And that prompted the club to start looking at increasing, increasing uniformity through a new, a design of a new irrigation system. As Peter said, as we take a look at the wells, we have no opportunity now to store water from rainwater runoff, no drainage water, no other means of taking water other than directly from the wells. So at, currently, an irrigation event could begin early in the evening and extend into, you know, into the early hours of the morning, sometimes up to nine o'clock in the morning to meet plant water on requirements. So the whole goal was to put water in a, in a, in a storage vessel, in a pond, where it could hold surplus water, and we could recharge that pond over a longer period of time, take the same amount of water, but instead of taking a big gulp from the groundwater, take it slowly and use one well to replenish the pond. The pond would be replenished within a twenty-four-hour period. The pond's not going to be drawn down except for in times of drought where there'd be dramatic restrictions on the use of the well, where that would be the only water available to use. And at that point, the golf course would go into a drought management plan, understanding what volume of water to have available to them, and take that water and draw that water down additionally, should they need to. So the transfer rate is going to be significantly less. In fact, it's going to be about half of what is currently taken from those wells. So that there's a, there's a, there's a very good advantage to that. But again, I wanted to address the uniformity piece because a full study was done on water distribution. And we completed that study, and that's prompted us to increase the efficiency and uniformity of the irrigation system. You know, right now, many times the golf course is forced to water during the day. There's a lot of evaporative losses because of watering during the day. And the idea in good turf grass management is to compress that water window, which is the time that it takes to complete an irrigation cycle, to compress that as much as possible. Some golf courses do it in four hours, others do it in six hours, but a good working practice is to do it in less than eight hours. And currently, with the current system and with the, with the restrictions that we have with wells, that can extend out to ten or twelve hours. And water is lost, like I said, to evaporation and what have you during those periods. And that's one of the reasons we like to have a compressed water window.
Elizabeth, could I just make a quick, quick response?
I already closed.
Okay, sorry.
If I go back on that, then I'm going to If I go back on that, then I'm gonna have to.
Understood, understood.
Um, let me, again, let me open this to the board. Jim, I think you were gonna say something, but maybe I'm wrong. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very diff, I find it a difficult. I find it a dilemma here for a number of reasons. But what I've, what I've kind of written down is the, is the things that are really driving me at the moment are first, the question of a public benefit. I think that there actually, I do think that there is a public benefit demonstrated by the ability to take less water directly from the ground, the monitoring wells and things that are going to go in here to try to, to ensure that it is not drawing water from the brook, the fact that it may be drawing water from the brook now. I mean, I just think that there are, that our town people have suggested quite a public benefit from this on that side. The next thing I look at is just to swing it all the way over to the other side is the failure to get proper permits. This is, you know, I mentioned this before, it's, it's, it's something that I find extremely disturbing when it happens in the town. And I just remind the board that first, they took more dirt than they were supposed to. Secondly, it took at least three or four times, it seems to have gotten a plan that would even deal with the groundwater conservancy issue and actually show that they weren't within four feet because other plans were that they were within four feet. And I just, I, I, I look at the array of professionals involved and everything else, and I, it just, it is an extraordinarily sloppy original presentation for, for really a number of, for really a number of tries. I mean, it didn't, it sort of didn't get better it until perhaps recently. And not only does that kind of put this on the other side of the public benefit, but it also leads me to have a real sense that this is not a situation in which we can, I can feel comfortable with any kind of approval without having a lot of stuff in writing and enforceable and all that kind of stuff, because I just, I do not, I do not see a demonstrated effort here by the club and and its professionals to necessarily find, you know, do everything to the letter. So I think we're gonna have to hold them to the letter. My third thing that I wrote down is the Jenny Dugan Brook. You know, I think on balance that I'm, I'm persuaded by the various evidence that there isn't a great danger to the Jenny Dugan Brook here and that the monitoring wells that the town is proposing and they're going to be here will have an impact on that, but it is something that I'm concerned about. And the last thing is the screening. And I do appreciate the fact that, you know, this is a golf course and that golf courses change and trees get cut down and trees get added and holes get moved around and, and all of that stuff. But I do think that here, once again, that we've heard from the, from the golf club that it is willing to replenish and redo and deal with the screening. And I think that's a very, very good thing. But I also think that it's something that I kind of agree with something Theo said earlier on, that it's something that I really want to see in writing, in a plan that I can really approve on. I mean, unfortunately, I do not feel comfortable under these circumstances saying, oh, let's let, you know, a final plan be approved by the town planner or anything else, just because not that I don't trust the town planner, because I certainly do, but I just, I just feel like it, it just, just doesn't feel like there is adequate work and effort going into this to, to really satisfy the situation. And I'm not sure why that's the case, but that's the way it's feeling to me. And so my, my antenna are up about, you know, approving something or approving something on a, yes, that'll happen basis. I, I just feel like we have to make sure it does happen. So those are my thoughts. I'm not, I'm not trying to make a judgment here about whether it ought to be approved or not, not. That's just that it's the thing that after all these months, these are the sorts of things that are, I feel, I feel have happened and have not happened. And, you know, and I will say that I think that as a, as a general rule, the idea of the pond does make sense to me for a number of reasons. But it's, I just the execution, I'm very worried about.
Uh, Dan, for you guys, say something.
Yeah, let me chime in. Very well said, Jim. Exactly along the lines that I was thinking. I just want to add a few things. It's like, I agree with the public benefit, but that's, that's what I was, my biggest concern was the town's water supply that's, and I think on the sidewalk, I got comfortable that this was an improvement to the town's water supply by being able to pump at a reg, at a more consistent basis that there are good monitoring wells in place and that are being monitored in real time by the, by the town, by the water department. So I felt that was, that was good. And also, DP Department of Environmental Protection has put limits on the war, the amount of water that can be pumped out of, out of the wells. So, and DP looks pretty strict at, at those, at the gallonage that's coming, coming out of the well. So there is not an unlimited water supply for the town. There is, there is, they, if, even if they wanted to, they, they are going to be running up against, up against DP's limit and at a certain point they will have to stop. If they were ever get, if they were ever getting there. That being said, I, I agree with Jim that it, I don't know exactly how you phrase it, but I, I think the applicant, it's been, I feel, I mean, we've been here long dealing with this, this application, but I also, and I think, I feel like it's, it's been a little bit of pulling teeth. Like we, the applicant never has been ahead of the game and, and, and providing us with information. It was always, we needed to ask, we need to ask, and it's, it's coming. And it's like, it's the planting plan, I think, is, is a prime example. Yes, it's a planting plan, but somebody could have put a little bit more thought into this and could have really made it a planting plan. You know, it's, it's, you know, and that, that would have sold that planting plan. You know, I'm not, not, just not sold on plan. So I think the applicant is not doing themselves any, any favors. And I forgot, I should have written down, just like you, Jim. I forgot the, oh yeah, I'm not just, just, I don't see a benefit in just plainly denying this and say like, bring it back to, to the original condition, because there is no original condition. You can't pull it, bring it back there. So bringing it back or just denying it and letting the golf course do what they currently are doing or work for a different solution is not something I'm necessarily interested in, because I don't think it's a benefit to anybody. I think we are, we have been dealt a hand and we should, you know, we should make lemonade out of it, if you will, and, and make, make the best solution possible out of it.
Yeah. What do you think about the alternatives analysis?
I, I think there is, there is an alternatives analysis. We looked at it while we're on site. There is, it's on the, it's on the website. The only, and there is quite a bit on it. The only other alternatives analysis that I've asked on our couple, couple, three times is, how about underground storage? And I might be way off base with that, but can somebody write that down for me on a piece of paper rather than saying like, yeah, it's not possible.
I'd be happy to contribute some information.
I actually, sorry, I'm, hold, hold on one second. I'm gonna stick with the board. The, uh, I, I agree with what you're saying, Theo. It's making lemonade out of lemons. On the other hand, I keep going back and forth between, yes, we were dealt this hand and maybe it doesn't make sense to, to go back, go backwards. On the other hand, does it make sense to at least acknowledge that that's a possibility? On that really, because I know how much effort has gone into this by many different town boards. So I have kind of thought similarly to what you said, but are we making a mistake by kind of not going back to the first question, which is, is this the right place to put this?
I, yeah, I, from what I've seen on it's, 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 it's the mic, I'm not, I'm not sure whether it's the perfect place. It's, it's a good spot and there's other good spots. Everything has it's, the other spots that were shown to us have, have their own pros and cons, whether it's wetland filling or what have you. You know, so there is, there is a bit of a subjective decision there. I mean, again, you know, if you said like, let's go somewhere else and you just cut more trees somewhere else, we're not getting him back in this location.
Right. Right. Uh, Robbie, did you have anything?
No further comment for me.
Well, I have to say, I was impressed by the neighbors' willingness and desire, it seems, to be part of knowing what's going on without necessarily saying they would be opposed to anything. And we've spent a lot of time on this and I still am kind of of that opinion that the neighbors working with the golf club might be the next step here. But I could be persuaded else. The other one.
Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Is the issue the plantings on the backside and a little bit more of a, I mean, I know Theo, you've asked for a little bit more on, on, on more of an expansive planting plan. I know that's one of those things. Is that, is that what we're kind of down to?
That's, that's, that's one thing. I, I think, you know, there is still some appetite, I think, for a better analysis of different locations for this pond. I think that's what I, what I at least heard. And the other thing is on the, I would like a better vision on how this pond would be fitting into the landscape. You know, whether it's making booms last deep and certain or, or what, but yeah, there is, it currently to me, and you know, please don't take no offense, it's a hole in the ground and we put some shrubs on it. And, and we, I think, you know, you can, you can do better than that.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, a couple of things. Well, one, the, you know, as we were out there looking at, I mean, the, the pond, I think, is from the ground level was another 20, 18 feet up. So on that, there was going to be, the pond is actually from down below, you wouldn't actually see inside the pond. So the, the way the upland works, I mean, all throughout the contours of the, of the backside of that, the uplands go up, so you're really not going to see what's in there. So it's really about that, that grading and that sloped area in the planting of that, of that spot that you're looking at. I mean, we can, we can definitely look at that and add more if we need to. That's, that's not a, that's not a problem. I think we did, we did talk about alternative sites that we looked at and locations. I think there was a question of, of the underground chamber. Paul Roche, our architect, did the design work. We looked at that. He can answer that in more detail if you'd like. He can address that. But I don't know if that's what you're, I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for.
Theo, I mean, I think you've heard from Paul at the site.
Right, right, right. And following up with Jim earlier, you said, let's get something in writing.
Okay.
Let's, let's just get, let's get a detailed alternatives analysis.
Uh, I'm sorry, put you on the spot, but you've been involved with this for a long time with many different boards. So if you, right, I mean, you kind of have probably, maybe not the way you're looking at me, but at least when we're talking about the planting plan, I'm just trying to think, I know that you and Elizabeth and probably Delia had taken a look at this. And what would you like to see? You ask specific questions, but what would you like to see on a plan that comes back to us?
Well, one of the things that's missing is just the spacing of the materials. And I think what with Theo underscored is where is the, the MOLINE? Where, how does, and, and this whole concept of a vision of how the pond fits into the landscape is, is I think a really important one. And to understand how the pond is going to be managed is, is also of concern. And there are no evergreen type plant materials. And there are shrubs as well as trees that could be incorporated into this to have a more diverse landscape that would even be better for wildlife to have a greater diversity of plant materials. All of the plants that were selected were excellent, but there could be more. So those are the kinds of things that I would see. And it could be beneficial to, I didn't walk the site, so I'm a little bit out of my comfort zone in making further recommendations, but I could go out and take a look and, and, and work on that as well.
And that would be fine.
Yeah, that kind, does that answer? I mean, that's the planning plan and that's again, assuming that we're saying, all right, well, this is, this hole is there. They did these alternative analysis. We're comfortable that those were done sufficiently.
And then indeed, how do we make that hole? And how do we shape that hole so that it fits in, blends in? And then, you know, how do we address if a plant material and MOLINES on, on, on make it even fit in better? And, and yeah, Marsha mentioned a couple of things. It's the, to me, something that's, that's very often overlooked, and I think I might be going too deep into a rabbit hole here is, is the seed mix. You know, an erosion control native seed mix doesn't tell me much. So.
I mean, I guess.
And that's, and that's, and that's important because that's the foundation of what, what's going to be there in the long term.
I think speaking to both your point and Jim's point that this is, it is a little bit like pulling teeth. We're spending a lot of time on this and it probably should be on the applicant to convince us that it's well thought through and manageable and not for us to sit here and say what we want to see on it in order for us to be convinced that it's well thought through and manageable. So I, I don't think the burden should be on us right now. I mean, I think we looked at this and we thought, nah, it's not really there. So that's, that's where I am. Jim, were you gonna?
Yeah, I was gonna just add two things, or three things. One, I agree with what you just said, Elizabeth and Theo. And I think that what I would like to, you know, I've, again, starting with the fact that for whatever reason, trees were cut, earth was moved, and there were violations of our laws. And so I think when you come back from that, it's, it's a question if you have to do it, you have to do everything, you have to do things right. And that's maybe the right, the, the point of this is maybe we don't make them restore it because maybe it never can be restored. But we can certainly hold everyone's feet to the fire. Here's what I think would be useful to have. Number one, I like to have the town and the I'd like to have the town and the applicant, you know, sort of do a write-up of the discussion that we had at the, at the site about why. And maybe it's in there someplace and you guys can just, Marsha can just point me to it, but you know, why we think that this, that there is benefit to the town from the ground, from, from a groundwater standpoint and benefit to the town from having these monitoring wells and that how those wells will protect the Jenny Dugan Brook. I'm not, I'm not saying that isn't all true. I'm just saying that I would just love to see it so that we have something to point to. Number two, I think there has to be a really good sophisticated and thoughtful plan for what we're doing for vegetation and all of that. But three, I just, this thing seems to scream out to me for some sort of a 3D model. I mean, what's this gonna look like? Where are the elevations? Where are the houses now? You know, I mean, we, we went out there and you know, sometimes we put balloons and other things to try to figure out how tall something's gonna be, but it's 18 feet tall and I'm six feet tall and I can't imagine three feet of me, three times me. I mean, I just, it's not a concept that's very easy for me. And yet it would seem like from this situation that a model that would show us how this is working as opposed to topological plans and all those things that I personally don't, you know, just don't relate to, I think would be helpful in the sense of, of really trying to get to some of the points here. Because I think that I can envision this site, having been there and walked it, I can envision this site as being absolutely gorgeous, wonderful pond, nice vegetation, a great hole of golf. I don't play a lot of golf, but I play enough to appreciate a good hole, golf hole. And I can appreciate, and I can see it as being a potential terrible eyesore for the neighbors and really sort of a denigration to the property. And I, and on, and honestly, I can't figure it out from the flat pieces of paper we have. And so, and I know you can't build, you know, and I, and I don't, and I feel like if we don't have some idea of what it's gonna look like when it's all done, it's very hard for us to, to sort of say that it's okay for the Concord Country Club to have violated the rules and that we're willing to nevertheless grant them the permit because we think at the end of the day, it will make the situation better and better in the long term. So I guess what I'm saying is I gotta have more information. Like, we could, if I, if I don't have, if forced to vote on this tonight, I would vote against it. And my first grounds would be that they didn't, the Concord Country Club violated the rules to begin with, and they have not demonstrated an ability to show me that they're properly, that they're, they're properly making up for that by creating a project that is of true benefit to the town. But I'm more than happy to look at some stuff and see if we can make this right. And, you know, obviously, if they want to go talk to the neighbors, I would think that would be in, in everyone's benefit. So that's where I am.
Yeah, as always, well said. I agree. And I think that gives us a good roadmap forward, Theo, if you're in agreement. I mean, it's, we need to be unanimous. It's not gonna get passed tonight. We can vote on it, but Jim just said it. He's gonna vote against it. And that's all you need to hear to know that it won't get passed.
So if we continue it and do the, do as you've asked, I mean, we might have to speak tomorrow as far as getting some of this in writing, just to be sure what exactly, since there are a lot of.
Let's talk.
But we can do that.
Let me, let me talk through it for a second because I think what I wrote down from what Jim said is an applicant, the, sorry, I write up by both the applicant and the town about why there is a benefit, which I mean, I don't know how that's done in coordination, Jim. I don't know if that's the applicant submitting something.
I think that, I think that, I think the applicant had, my understanding from talking, and I'm blanking on his name, I apologize, from the town that was with us at the site visit.
John Rogers?
John Rogers. Thank you. I was gonna say John Reed, and I knew that wasn't it. You know, my, my understanding is, is that, that he and others in the town had sort of gone through a lot of back and forth and they were feeling pretty comfortable. So I think if somebody could even collect the written information and supplement it a little bit so that I had some sort of a recommendation, you know, so that here's the stuff that was presented to the town. Here's what they agreed to do. Here's the town's analysis that says, yes, those things will accomplish, you know, those, it's, it's, I think all the words were there. It's just, I just, I'd just like to see it. Yeah.
Yep. Included the groundwater and protection of Jenny Dugan. And then the plan, I completely agree with you. I think that you kind of hit the nail on the head. I cannot envision this. And if you were gonna come before us with a really a rendering that would made us go, oh, wow, that's really attractive, we would be a lot easier for us to vote for this. So I, I think that's what we're all saying, if, if it would be really attractive, but we don't, not us really understand what it's gonna look like when you say it.
It's a golf course. I'm gonna assume it's, it will be attractive.
Okay. Well, we, I mean, but if you showed us that, you know, and.
And, and in this case, the backside needs to be attractive.
And what is attractive is gonna also depend on what the neighbors think. I would echo what Jim said about speaking with the neighbors.
Elizabeth, in a moment, no, I just have a, wanna ask you, could I just say one thing at the end, which will help because there've been a lot of things said, and if I say it, it'll clarify.
How does that work if I reopen public comment, then I have to reopen it to everyone, right?
It's not, it's not a public comment reopening. It's just one clarification.
Go ahead. No, no, I can't. I can't. Marsha says I cannot. I'm sorry. You know what you can do? Write it. How about, they can write it to Heather or Marsha. So you can chat it to them and they can make the clarification. Do you see the chat thing?
Yes, and.
And that, them, to, to, to have, to Marsha and Heather, and they, they can relay it to us.
Right, right now.
Yes.
Yeah, sure. Go for it.
Okay. Um, so, sorry, Theo, were you gonna say something about that, the, a model or a plan or? I think what we're saying is, show us.
We need, we need to go, we need to have some good visuals. At one point I asked for a, for a section through the pond, which we got, but it was a, it was an engineering section and it's like, yeah. I think the club needs to, needs to sell that pond to us, how good it's gonna look. And, and, and it needs to, you know, whatever, whatever means they, they will employ. Yeah. The, and you know, the, and actually the engineering drawings were kind of hard to read, but existing and proposed contours were making it a bit messy to understand how really the flow of the land was. Or is going, is going to be.
So going, giving you great continues for you to come back to us. Sorry, Theo, go ahead.
Yeah, there was one other thing. I think we, a more concise alternatives analysis.
Oh, I guess that could go along with, with benefits and the town and summarizing how they came to the alternative analysis. I mean, just from, from our point of view, we're reading things that are written months apart by different boards, by different things that you're submitting. I agree with Theo. You gotta sell it to us in a way that makes us believe it. Barsha, did you wanna, or Heather, did you get that comment? From Sharon? No, okay. So I would.
Working on it.
Okay. We'll wait, Sharon. But I'm not gonna go against Marsha. She told me not to do it, so.
Well, if you open it up for one, you've gotta open it up for everyone. So that's why I just.
War of our meeting, so.
And we'll, and we'll, and everyone will get a chance the next time.
We're not voting on it. So, so I would say let's continue for a reasonable amount of time. I don't know if that's one or two months. Greg, I'm, I'm looking.
You know, I, I mean, it's definitely one month. I'm thinking probably two. I mean, could I, could I kind of speak to everybody tomorrow and get back to you on that? But I, I think two months is probably gonna be a little bit closer only because I just, I don't know with, you know, with doing this, to get this in that short of a time, I'm just not sure and I don't wanna.
It's fine with us. I, I, I mean.
I think that we have to continue it to somewhere.
I mean, it's fine for us if we do two months instead of one month was.
Right. I mean, I just wasn't sure. I didn't know if I could give you like till tomorrow or something to talk about.
We have to continue it tonight to a certain.
Then take, we'll take the two months. Take the two months, just.
So that's, wait, I remember. That's June 10th at 7:10, right?
7:05.
No, 7:05 is taken, remember?
All right.
No, 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 seven.
No, you're right.
Seven o'clock was taken.
Sorry. You were right. 7:05 on June 10th. Okay.
I move that we continue this public hearing until June 10th at 7:05.
Second. All right, Mr. Kindermans.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Ms. Akers-Moore, I. All right. So the comment, the piece of information you are missing, I'm just gonna say this, in terms of alternative analysis, is the non-engineering solution. That is to restore the landscape, plant more vegetation and otherwise restore the hydrology that will provide the water needs for the course. Okay. So that's an alternatives analysis of restoring, is the comment.
Right. Duly noted. We could, could we, by the way, this is really technical, but I mean, that seems to me like the, the functional equivalent of a letter to the board. So does that get captured for purposes of our record? Cause this is after the public hearing.
We can capture that. Yes, we can save the chat.
So just make sure we save it in the file so that Sharon doesn't have to write it. I mean, she could write another eloquent letter if she wishes, but she will also have it there.
Thank you, Sharon, for, for typing. Great. So we will see you in June.
Good. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Great. And that means we are on our last order of business here, which is the administrative business of 209, 249, 29A, Mustafield Road, extending the special permit. Heather, Marsha, what's the, this is the Hammerhead. Nothing's been done. They want how long?
Good question. I'm sorry, Heather, I don't know about this one.
There is a letter from Beals and Associates. We are writing to follow up to the letter submitted on March 23rd, 2021, requesting an extension of the special permit issued on July 15th to 2019 for 209, 249, 29A, Mustafield Road. Based on subsequent information provided, we are revising our request for requested extension of one year from the original expiration date of July 15th, 2021 to July 15th, 2022.
Remind us. What's our, go ahead.
This request is being submitted since the original permit issued for the property is set to lapse prior to the commencement of any construction or construction-related activities on the 29A Mustafield Road property. From the time that the permit was issued until present, the property has been marketed for sale, but has not yet been sold. Or the owner of the property is currently working with a potential buyer on the sale of the property, but it is anticipated that the transaction will not be complete prior to the expiration of the permit. Therefore, the owner is requesting a one-year extension, which should grant sufficient time to conclude the sale of the property.
Is this something we would normally grant without issue or? Marsha, I think is saying something.
Maybe Marsham's saying.
No, I'm sorry. There is someone waiting to get in and there was a, Ted O'Rourke was early on the meeting and he had a comment that he wanted to add to this discussion. So.
There's a question about this.
About this. So he's, so, and I don't see him here. I indicated that I would share that information with, with the board. And, and I'm sorry, I was trying to do multiple things here. So I've sort of lost track. Are you open to comments or you're just?
Yeah. We're wondering, we, we've heard what, what they want to do and we're just trying to understand if there's any, any thoughts on that from the staff. So you're, you're up.
Well, I think that they have, they've expressed the rationale with pandemic. They haven't, they've been unable to move forward. They've been trying to market the, the property. And I think that granting the extension would be warranted. I don't know about the date. And that's, that's what I think you said it, but I didn't hear it to, to know.
A year. They said a year. So from July 21 to July 22, I think.
Right.
But did this other person have a comment that was consistent with what you just said? Is that?
No, they, they were concerned. This person is in a butter. It is Ted and Eleanor Rourke at 301 Mustafield Road. They, they said when it was happened two years ago, he felt a walkthrough of the property by the ZBA would be beneficial to show the negative effect of having this on the, having this on the neighbors. I would like to request that this happen at this time and feel that this should be considered. Creation of the lot has been extremely disruptive to the neighboring properties and the neighborhood overall, and is also very close to wetlands, which we would like to have resurveyed because we questioned the buffer location based on other wetlands testing that has been done on the property. It did not match. These requests were dismissed two years ago. However, we're requesting to be considered this time before granting an extension. I don't think that, that, I don't think that is necessarily relevant, this is Marsha speaking, they're relevant to the request for the extension of time because it doesn't change or impact the, the special permit in any shape or form, but that's.
If, 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 if a wetlands line was delineated and they got either an order of condition or an ORAD, that would have been valid for three years at least.
And they can get an extension of the ORAD.
That as well. Yeah.
Okay.
It's hard to, I mean, I wondered when you, I wondered when they, when Heather was reading it, whether this was COVID related in terms of the lack of ability to sell it.
Real estate, real estate market is hot, so not.
Well, the real estate market's hot if the house can be moved into, but if you have to figure out how to get it constructed and whether or not you're gonna run into COVID issues. So there, I think that can be an issue too.
So was I saying?
Says the man who had, had, had the kitchen not going, my kitchen renovation not going anywhere for, for three weeks because the cabinet makers had a COVID problem and I couldn't get the cabinets out.
Oh, man. So I'm sensing we don't have an issue with this given the COVID-related nature. All right. So.
This open for public comment?
We could, go ahead.
So. This is Andrew Carey, although it says Liza Carey. I live on Park Lane in a butt this through, we're across the stream from this site. So I don't know if I'm formerly in a butter, maybe I've got 10 feet of conservation land in between. I understand what Mr. Smith said about the process of building something, but given all of the construction vehicles I see and houses being built and renovated and conquered over the past year, I don't understand how this possibly could be a construction issue. And if you look at the real estate markets over the past 12 months, people are buying everything they can in towns like Concord that are outside urban settings. I don't understand why they really need this extension or why it should be granted, but it's one person's opinion. Thank you.
I guess the question is, have circumstances changed for us that would make us not grant the special permit, right? And I don't, I think the answer to that is, is no, right? The wetlands delineation stands and nothing else with this part of.
Ray, do you have any idea how often this happens? Were they, cause we've run into these before where somebody.
Also, I was thinking, I mean, you've regularly extended special permits in the past. I mean, I can't, I can't think of anyone's, anything specific right now, but I know you've done it.
That's, that's my feeling.
Actually, there was a, in my apartment that was permitted a couple of years ago, two years lapsed, he came back just, you know, administratively, got extended.
Yep.
So it has happened in the past.
I, I, who knows why it isn't selling? They're. Who knows why it isn't selling? Their price probably is an issue, but anyway. So I would say I don't have an issue with this extension. Anyone else?
I'm, I'm fine. So I'll need to make a motion to continue the special permit for 209, 249 and 29A Mustafield Road for a period of one year after the expiration of the current special permit, which is in July of 2021.
Second.
Mr. Kindermans.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Akers-Moore, aye. Hey.
I made it through.
I, you know what? Elizabeth wasn't here. She didn't feel well after her shot, so.
Yeah, that's why I had to run. I've been just drinking so much water today.
Anyway, that was Elizabeth's excuse. Well, we'll buy it. Well timed, isn't it? Well timed. Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the long haul on this one. So all in, in May.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for well-run meeting.
Oh, thank you.
For sure. Very well-run. All right. Great. Thanks, everybody.
You just leave. That's how we.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, Marsha.